Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at eight thirty a.m. in City Hall Council Chambers. As always, we start with a prayer and the pledge. We could ask Senior Pastor Ralph Hohen come forward with the source church, and please stand. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Father, thank you for these people. Thank you for their lives. Lord, I pray that you would just bless this meeting. Lord, I pray that there would be a meeting of integrity. There would be a meeting that is be fairness for everybody that's here and involved. And Lord, I pray that you would bless the city of Bradenton, bless their staff, bless their families. Lord, thank you for the police department. I pray that you'd bless them as well. And Lord, we just lift this time up to you and ask that you would just be honored here today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. We'll call the meeting to order. I did have one announcement to start out. We did have a plan of a mayor for a day of Fletcher Ferguson, but fortunately Fletcher got a little sick. It's a six-year-old from Stewart Elementary that was going to be here, but he's going to reschedule sometime in the future. So we were all excited to see Fletcher, but unfortunately won't be here today. So, Madam Clerk, proclamations?
No, sir.
Okay, presentations?
Yes. Unfortunately, Dr. Jefferson also was feeling under the weather, so the Juneteenth update is going to be postponed. So first up, we have Bradenton Economic Impact Study.
And Mayor, if I could just preface this, this is the Economic Impact Study that has been prepared by Regional Economic Consulting Group, Dr. Clyde Deo and Jared Parker. If the council may remember, these are the individuals basically that had done a lot of fiscal impacts of development projects and other types of economic opportunities for the state of Florida through the Florida Legislature and Governor's Office. Mr. Deo had retired from the state, and Mr. Parker, it's been about ten years. I had disseminated this report to council, I believe it was yesterday or Monday evening for review, and they have a brief presentation, and then we'll stand for questions. We know that time is of the essence this morning, so I've asked them to try to limit their PowerPoint and slide presentation to about fifteen minutes. Stand for some questions at the call of the chair, and otherwise be here to present.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Perry, I would like to make one other statement before we get started with the presentation. As Councilwoman Barnaby is out with our COVID protocol situations, and so she is on the phone listening, and we're still going through, you know, obviously COVID in our country, so we're able to do that just with through COVID only. So, all right, go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I am Dr. Clyde Deo. I'm with the Regional Economic Consulting Group. And first of all, I would like to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to work on this very important project for the city. I've gone around the city. It's a beautiful city, and I love it. But anyway, so let me talk about the company. The Regional Economic Consulting Group is, in fact, a research group which basically measures the economic impacts of public and private sector projects. Especially, we do a lot of economic impacts for other, especially economic development projects for the state and different counties. We also cover wide-ranging fields, panel, economic outlook, demographic and labor market studies, and basically uses various tools in economics like Remy modeling, IMPLAN, cost-benefit analysis, general input-output analysis, and particularly econometric modeling, which is my specialization. The, as Rob mentioned, we come in with a very different perspective because both of us came from units of government within the state. I used to be the Deputy Policy Coordinator for the Florida Executive Office of the Governor, and have served under four governors, Governor Jeb Bush, Governor Charlie Crist, Governor Rick Scott, and in fact, one year with Governor DeSantis. And really, my experience is like, I've got like thirty-four years of economic experience specializing in econometric modeling, forecasting, and economic developments. I used to develop, I mean, I developed the Florida economic model which is used to project, you know, where the economy is going, and looking at the total number of jobs, number of cars, number of houses being built in Florida, even tourist numbers. I predict, I project that. And we use that, in fact, to come up with a state budget. And also, I used to do forecast demographics for Florida for the next ten to twenty years, where it's going, you know, because the population growth in Florida is tremendous. We're actually adding like a thousand people per day, almost a thousand people per day. And that puts a lot of pressure on our resources as well as the demand for goods and services. Population growth, in fact, drives the economy. That's what it is. So those are the kind of stuff we do. I was very much involved in policy analysis. And in two thousand and ten, I was the governor's census liaison, but that basically oversaw the sharp increase in participation rate from sixty-five to seventy-four percent in that census. And basically adding two more congressional seats for Florida. But before that, I was also the chief economist for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and I'm a diehard Seminole fan. I graduated from, I got my master's and PhD at Florida State. And I have Jared Parker here, who has ten years of experience with the legislature, with the Office of Economic Demographic Research, and before that, he also was an economist for the Florida Department of Revenue. So he's got a career history in projecting revenues and determining fiscal impacts, just like I did, and was involved in state's analysis and committee hearings featuring the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. And really, his experience is on tax policy, economic development, constitutional amendments, including utility, deregulation, and solar choice in Florida. And again, he is a diehard Seminole fan. I mean, diehard Seminole graduate from Florida State, got his master's degree in applied economics there. So now...
Sometimes there's good things to leave out a resume.
I know. But, hey, you know, we're proud Seminoles here. I am. So, you know, what is the objective then of this project? The objective is to determine the economic impact of a mixed-use development at one oh one Old Main Street, Bradenton, Florida. So that was the only thing that was given to us. So we had to come up with ways, so how we approach this. So how are we going to analyze this, the economic, and so we're going to analyze the economic impacts and fiscal impacts of various scenarios. So we came up with scenarios like, okay, what if we put a hotel? Or maybe a commercial non-retail development like offices, or commercial retail development and multifamily residential and housing development such as condominiums, you know? And from that, we have to measure then the direct and indirect induced effects of the site development in terms of job creation, personal income, low effect on the gross domestic product, and economic output, as well as tax revenues. The most important thing is, of course, tax revenues because you want to maximize what you're getting out of this investment, right? So, but ultimately, the whole idea is to actually develop a simulation model that would, you know, you plug in numbers there, and it spits out the results in terms of what are the economic impacts as well as tax impacts, if you particularly take a mixed-use development or you choose a different, what do you call this, scenario? And that's going to be like presented today. But before we do this, you know, since we have to operate within certain parameters, so we have to develop certain assumptions, okay? So, because the method that we've taken is a two-pronged approach. We have the direct, we have to determine the direct expenditures, and we use those direct expenditures to actually estimate the dynamic impact. So what are the dynamic impacts? These are job creations, effects on GDP, tax revenues, and the determination of economic output. So first is we have to do the estimation of these direct impacts. So we came up with numbers like, okay, for construction assumption, we base this from coming, construction cost. Coming is one of the largest, probably the largest group here that in fact estimates all this cost per square foot, you know, construction per square foot. So we came up with a scenario assuming a hundred thousand square feet. Then we came up with construction cost numbers, like high-rise costs are very expensive, it's like five hundred and sixty-four dollars per square foot. Multifamily costs like two hundred ninety-nine per square foot, and commercial cost is five hundred twenty-eight dollars per square foot. Now this, all these numbers came from coming, so we use secondary data to actually come up with these numbers here. So we also wanted to know the effects on property, proprietors, because proprietors will have to spend that money anyway within the local economy. So what is important is for them to spend that money to have a major effect on Bradenton, okay? So we came up with numbers like two hundred fifty dollars per night for rate for a hotel room, okay? They can operate a hotel. Or two thousand three hundred monthly rent per unit for family unit, you know, assuming if they rent multifamily homes. So those are the numbers that we, and these numbers are very reasonable because we check these numbers based on the existing data here, and these are numbers that are very, you know, reasonable in the sense that, you know, you've got a very prime location that's located in the city. So then we also have to look at occupants, the occupants expenditures. So we have to come with, come up with assumptions. We don't really know the exact, you know, revenues that they're getting, so we base it on capitalization rates. Capitalization rate is basically the expected percentage annual income on the value of the property investment. So that's calculated by just dividing net operating income by the current market value. So that's very different from the ROI, because ROI takes into account the time, you know, period. In this case, it's not. It's just like, what is, what is the net operating income divided by the current market value? And the market value can change, you know, overnight. So we use a commercial rate of eight percent. Eight percent is within range, usually ranges from five to ten, five to fifteen percent. So ten percent is good, or commercial rate of eight percent is good. We also look at the capitalization rate for residential at six percent, which is within reason. Then we, we have to calculate also, we have to look at the rent-to-revenue ratio for non-retail, lower overhead proportionally more, you know, revenue dedicated to rent at ten percent. For retail, they usually have higher overhead and proportionally less revenue dedicated to rent. We, so we pick like eight percent. So you say, how did we pick these numbers? There's a range that was presented to us, and we said, okay, based on our knowledge, we'll use these numbers because they are reasonable. The most important thing for assumptions is that you have to have a reasonable and realistic assumptions, and that's one thing I've learned after working the governor's office for twenty years. So then we also look at condominium pricing. This was based on high-rise cost per square foot times the condo unit square. We assumed like, I think, eighteen ninety, eighteen ninety? Yeah, one thousand eight hundred ninety is the size of that condo. So we came up with a number of one point two five million dollars, one point two million. That's a very reasonable number because we also compared that with other places, you know, even the one right across, across the bridge, you know, Palmetto. So, so we came up with these parameters, and I believe that these parameters are very reasonable. Then, then the other, the next part is looking at the spending rate for construction because we have to make an assumption as to how much of this are being spent locally because that's really what matters. That expenditure on local economy, in fact, is the one that creates jobs and other beautiful things in the city, like increasing GDP, output, and income. So based on this, our assumption is that sixty-three point five percent of construction expenditures on spending other than employees. So these are the raw materials, so forth and so on. And we also assume that eighty percent of this will be spent locally. Materials will in fact be procured most likely through local means, and less than half of the workers originate within the vicinity. So we also look at then the local spending rate for retail because retail operates differently. We assume that all employees originate locally, all materials originate from outside the city and in the region. Then we also assume that fifty percent of whatever they make actually spent locally because fifty percent will be spent somewhere. A lot of these retail stores purchase the product somewhere. So they spend maybe in California or in China or wherever, you know? So only fifty percent of whatever they make will be spent locally. So that is our assumption. But for the others, we assume that all the employees will originate locally, and most materials are in fact sourced or supplied locally. So we also assume, again, an eighty percent local spending rate for all the other options. Now I'd like to give the floor to my colleague here, Jared Parker, who's going to be explaining, talking about the methodology as well as the findings of the study that we have, and he's going to do the simulation, as you can see later.
Good morning. So picking up from my partner left off, so we have two primaries. So we have two primary pieces here. We have direct expenditures, and then we have the dynamic expenditures or the dynamic phase, which is the fallout from your direct expenditures. Direct expenditures break down into five primary scenarios, and then for each of those scenarios, we break out two phases. You have your construction phase, and you have your operations phase, or your recurring phase in that respect. The construction phase, as Clyde was talking about, is based on the types of construction and the construction cost per square feet, and that's broken into three areas: your high-rise, your multifamily, your commercial construction. Your operational phase, we break into five different scenarios, which is your hotels, your multifamily, non-retail, retail, and your condominiums. The hotel expenditures are pretty straightforward. We assume that maximum revenue is the number of rooms times the rate of the room times three hundred and sixty-five nights. We then do a couple adjustments to create the local spending, which is your maximum revenue times your occupancy times your local spend rate. And that will, that pairs down what a hotel is going to spend on the local economy. Multifamily is a similar, similar spirit, and just instead of hotel rooms, you're looking at actual multifamily units. And instead of a nightly rate, you're looking at a monthly rate. But again, you're looking, you're making assumptions for occupancy and local spend rates. The non-retail and the retail are handled a little bit different than hotels and multifamilies because there's two parties here. You're looking at the landlord or the proprietor in this case, and you're looking at the occupant. The proprietor, you know, his property value is going to dictate roughly what his revenue should be. And his revenue is a function of capitalization rates, as Clyde explained earlier. The, again, the, once we know the revenue for the proprietor, that revenue is their rent. We can then assume that the occupant is going to be paying some, is going to be paying that rent to the proprietor. And then you look at the occupant's revenue, and it's basically just subtracting out the rent and then making assumptions for what are called rent-to-revenue ratios. So as Clyde again mentioned in the assumptions, the rent-to-revenue ratios for non-retail assumes that the non-retail guys have lower overhead, so they dedicate a higher percentage of revenue towards rent, whereas the retail guys have a higher overhead, so they dedicate a lower percentage of revenue to rent. And then last but not least, we have the condominium operations, where the condominium, again, you have a proprietor, but these are more like your residential building managers. These are the guys that, you know, make sure the lights are on downstairs and do maintenance and handle events. That's a, and then after that piece, you have the actual value of the units themselves for later on tax purposes. So getting into the dynamic piece, every, both phases are approached the same way. We look at what does construction mean to jobs created, what does it mean to labor income created, value-add regional GDP and economic output. The jobs created and the labor income, I think, is pretty straightforward, but we break it down into direct, indirect, and induced levels. The direct area in the report, these are things like, you know, if I have five dollars in my pocket, I spend five dollars. That's direct impact. Indirect would be your supply chain. So if I'm spending five dollars, whoever I'm giving that five dollars to, they spent some amount of money to supply me a good that costs five dollars. And then finally, your induced piece is that the employees that were putting that shelf on the product get a paycheck. They go out in the economy and they spend. So you have multiple levels of economic effects falling out of expenditures. So we take that general philosophy, and we apply it to the construction phase of each scenario, and we apply it to the operational phase of each scenario. And then from there, we can actually produce tax impacts. So the direct tax impacts, we assume, there's basically four major ones. There's local option, impact fees, property, and tourist development tax. Not every scenario is going to pay all these taxes, but most, all of them pay property taxes. Retail is going to be paying your local option tax, and your hotel is going to be paying your tourist development tax. Your impact fees are going to come across the board from construction. The way we didn't report, we broke out city impact fees versus county versus special district. And the special districts in this case include all special districts, including schools. And so ultimately, what these assumptions and this methodology leads to is a foundation. And we found in the base report that typically, non-retail has the highest economic benefits out of all the scenarios. Multifamily has the lowest economic benefits. And then we found that retail, while it doesn't necessarily generate the highest economic benefits, it does generate the most tax revenue. And again, the goal of this was to set up a foundation to produce the simulation. And in this case, the simulation is purely hypothetical, but we're assuming in general, if a million square feet, you know, we really wanted to max out and show what's, what is, the model is capable of producing. But we assumed a million square feet, thirty-seven point five percent went to hotel, and the other thirty-seven point five went to condos. And then we assumed two base floors, one for retail, one for non-retail. As you can see, multifamily is absent, and that's based on the idea that it had the lowest economic benefits out of all the scenarios. So in this case, million square feet broken out in such a way, we know the, you're going to look at about four hundred and forty-three point eight million dollars in local spending falling out of the construction project. That's going to give you four thousand one hundred and twenty-three jobs, pay out two hundred and twenty-five point nine million in construction labor income, and then add three hundred and twenty million to the local GDP, and six hundred and fifty-six point three million in local and economic output. Now I'll just add in there, the difference between economic output and GDP in this case is that GDP breaks out final goods and services. It's just the sum of all final goods and services produced. Whereas the economic output is, includes intermediate goods. So for example, if I'm building a chair, GDP is the final cost of the chair, whereas economic output is the cost of the nails, the glue, the wood, and the final cost of the chair. So and finally, on a recurring standpoint, once the, after the four hundred and forty-three point million is invested to build the property, the operational phase is that you'll get one hundred and seventy-seven point seven million in local spending each year out of the project, plus twenty-eight hundred jobs and ninety-four point five million paychecks, and then the regional GDP of one hundred and fifty-six point eight million and two hundred and eighty-nine point four million in economic output. Let me, so, so again, this all sets up the final piece to get into the model, which I want to bring this up so you guys can see. So we created, so ultimately, the goal of the report was to create this calculator. And the idea is that whatever projects or proposals are brought forward, you can actually plug in their characteristics and look at the fallout in a construction phase and an operations phase. And you look at it per square foot, and then you gross that up to the total impact. So let's just pretend it's, I don't know, five hundred thousand square feet. And then let's say it's, I don't know, fifty percent a hotel, and let's say it's fifty percent retail. This output here is what that should imply to the community, really. So you're going to get two thousand jobs from the construction phase, you're going to provide three thousand constant jobs, you're going to create three hundred and twenty-two million in economic spending by the construction project, and that's also going to lead to two hundred and eighteen million spent annually in the local economy. Furthermore, you can look at the tax pieces. You see the city is going to get one point seven million from the construction phase, and that's going to lead to two point two million in recurring revenue for the city. So I think that pretty much concludes.
So you can, yeah, you can basically make like several combinations of this, mixed economic development. And, you know, the model actually spits out the value in terms of economic impacts, in terms of the number of jobs created, labor income, effects on GDP, regional GDP, as well as the economic output, and especially impacts on taxes.
Mayor, if I could just be heard on that, the point, the value of this is that as council discusses policy for the city of Bradenton in the future, and what they would like to see built here, and evaluating various proposals that come in, some may be all apartments, some may be mixed-use and the like. This is a functional, flexible tool that will provide us an ability to calculate economic impact. And so, so it's very valuable and beneficial, and I think it was the necessary, the tool in the toolbox to have for the work that will come before council in the following months.
Okay, all right. Questions? Mrs. Coker?
Couple of little things. I was just curious on a couple of things. What's the difference between multifamily and condos?
So multifamily are your apartment units?
Okay, so rentals. Okay, okay. And the other thing I was wondering, is there any effect between going with affordable housing, luxury? I mean, the size of the units, any of that? Does it affect this calculation?
You're telling me that in terms of the size of apartment versus condo? Yeah, we assume for the apartments, eight hundred square feet per unit, and then we assume eighteen, one thousand eight hundred ninety square feet for, per unit for the condos. And that's just based on our local market research, looking in here, looking over Palmetto to get an idea of what a rough size would be.
Well, thanks. Awesome. This is just great. I feel like there's a flaming spear on the ground right now.
Mrs. Barnaby, did you have a question? Ms. Barnaby, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I wanted to check to see if I had muted my, my phone before I started talking. I find all of this rather encouraging. When City Hall was placed on our waterfront back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, I, I was opposed, absolutely one hundred percent opposed to it. I didn't think it was a good idea to have emergency services and a floodplain. And if we have the opportunity to correct that while improving our downturn and our tax base, I think it's something that we need to look very seriously at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I do remember when City Hall moved. I was opposed, and actually, my very first attempt at public speaking was on the steps of Old City Hall. There was a big crowd of disgruntled taxpayers that were down there, and I took my little daughter over there to watch and wound up speaking, and, and I wound up here. Anyway, so just at the very beginning of this, it was a good presentation, by the way. And you said, at the very beginning, you were talking about all the different things. You said, "In most important tax revenue," you said that. And so... And so as I'm looking forward and figuring out what we're going to do in the whole scheme of things, I'm assuming that the, when we're, when we're talking about the, you know, the tax revenue, meaning this is a government facility, not, not generating taxes.
Yeah.
And we're going to put it in there, a facility that is going to pay taxes. But more importantly, it's in the downtown core, and that's what makes it so valuable. If this project were outside the downtown core, would these numbers work?
Um, not necessarily.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot, the base assumptions.
I know that.
This is a prime location here, as you can see.
A prime location.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, I actually took these two gentlemen on a golf cart and drove them basically all around the city for about an hour, showing them that and highlighting the Manatee Basin, Central Basin here in downtown core. So I wanted to have personal familiarity before they barked upon the technical analysis that they did. It was, it was a fun day, it was a hot day, and I think it was helpful for these fellows.
Absolutely.
In fact, I was, I'm staying right now at the hotel next door.
Yeah.
And they have this restaurant and bar upstairs, you know, on top. It's beautiful. That place, it took a lot of pictures, just like the sunset and everything, and people were taking pictures all over the place. So that tells you something, that it really has a lot of value. And if you can make use of this, it will generate a lot of tax revenues for the city.
I, I agree. And, and also, I, I was on the board when we did the Hampton Suites, when we salvaged the historic, what used to be called the Pink Palace, that it was disrepair, it was, we were going to have to tear it down. That's, the discussion at City Hall was that we were looking, if we didn't do something quickly, it was going to be demolition instead of a rejuvenation. And I'm very proud of the fact that we rejuvenated that and put cities' revenues into it. And, and we've taken a lot of criticism for that. And by the way, I've taken a lot of criticism for that hotel that you're so, so correctly bragging about, because I, I, I believe that we did, we squeezed, I was just talking to city administrator about that. At the time, we squeezed a, a very good asset in a postage stamp sized property. Previously, our discussions with the city were that that property, when the players left, we were going to sit on it for development to come in, and we were, we were going to have to acquire another piece of property, either, either this one, we were, we were looking at possibly when someday the law firm would, would decide to move, that we would acquire that. So we were thinking we were going to have to sit on that small chunk of land forever. And it turned out, we were able to put that in there. So I, I do, I agree with all these assessments there, and I just, I just wanted to make the point, though, that this, it's because of downtown that this is so valuable, because we're also looking at where we go.
Yes.
Because we can't, none, none of this can happen.
Yeah.
Unless we're able to move our operation. And I'm looking at that portion.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. And I just want to make a comment off of what you said about a couple of things and Ms. Barnaby. Obviously, what happened 20-plus years ago, there's a lot of opinions on and how and why and when, but that situation has given us a great, great, huge opportunity now.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you heard some of the things that might have come here and might, now, we've been talking about this, and I don't know that our downtown would be as viable as it is and as it can be. So, you know, we've got a great opportunity to look forward, and that's what I think we, we're looking at now. Also, and Mr. Roth and I were the only ones sitting up here at that time, when Hotel Next Door got approved and with a very small city contribution and some parking issues that we worked through, we've got that beautiful Spring Hill Suites that probably in our lifetimes, everyone in this room's lifetime, as far as the pandemic, that saved our downtown, that hotel being there during the pandemic. And, you know, we know that that hotel, from what we hear, is breaking all records in the Marriott product because of what the city, the developers and the community put a small investment in to get a huge return. So, you know, I mean, I'm not a big person that thinks that, that government should always be running some things, but I think government has to be that catalyst in starting things and be that, you know, carrot at, at the beginning maybe, and, and work out how much you do and get involved. But, but I think there's opportunity here that, that what happened in the past happened, the opportunity for the future is, is grand for us and, and, you know, it's there. So, Mr. Sanders, did you have any comments?
I do. Would you like to go ahead?
Mr. Sanders, go ahead, you're up. I, I had you first, so.
Okay.
I had you first.
You go on there.
Well, I had you first, Mr. Sanders, go ahead.
Okay. What's inflation going to do?
I'm sorry, what?
Inflation.
It's 9%.
9%. What's it going to be next year?
Probably not 9%, probably 1%.
It's not going to, it's not. I'm just teasing.
9%, 9%.
I like, I'm just teasing, I like messing with economists. One of your slides, you had, one of your slides, you had building costs, construction, commercial building costs of $528 a square foot. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So this building is 100,000 square feet, so it would cost $52 million to rebuild it. Would that be a correct statement?
As a commercial plot?
Well, this is a commercial plot.
Under that construction, based on that data from the Cummings that we found nationally, yeah, it'd be close to that.
It'd cost 52 million. So if we, if we, if we, have you ever owned a property or know anybody that has owned a property that had $10 million in it and 22 years later sold it for the, almost the exact same amount of money? Would that be a good, good, would that be a good economic scenario?
If the...
So you spent how much?
This round number, we can argue it, it's approximately 10 million 20 years ago to build this facility, and we're entertaining or considering, what, what would you sell it for today?
I mean, that, that part's kind of outside the scope of the analysis. We were just looking at the economic impact of what could go into this area.
Okay.
And flesh out.
I, I understand, but, but those, those are, those are real hard numbers that I have to deal with, because the difference between what we sell this for and what we replace it with is a burden on the taxpayer. So that's where I'm at. But, so how did you arrive at these assumptions on the size of the hotel or the apartments or the condos? How did you arrive at that? Where did you get those figures from?
Which ones? The square feet for, in the assumption piece?
Mm-hmm.
As per unit?
Yeah.
That's just based on market research, looking at Bradenton and looking across the, across the way in Palmetto.
So you were comparing it to Riviera Dunes?
We're comparing it to what's in the region and what's available on the current market.
So how many story facility was this for a hotel that, that generates $250 a night?
How many stories was the hotel?
How many rooms? How many rooms?
How many rooms?
Stories, eight, 10 stories?
It's a number of rooms. Square footage divided by the square foot per hotel room. So we're assuming 400 square feet per room. If you have 100,000 square feet, you divide that by 400 square feet per room.
Yeah.
To generate the number of units.
But, you know, as I mentioned, you know.
Well, that's how you arrive at, at, at numbers, is you have to have, if I'm going to build a hotel and I want to have 200 rooms.
The goal of...
You have to know the number of rooms or you can't make any assumptions.
The thing about it is it boils down to the square, the cost per square foot.
Right.
I know that.
Because you can build like...
Well, I, I changed gears on you. I'm not talking about cost per square foot.
200,000, 500,000.
Right.
So, but it doesn't really change the fact that the cost per square foot is actually the same.
Yep.
And we base this from coming, which is a very reputable...
I'm sorry, I changed gears on you. I went from the cost of the construction to the revenue generated from a new construction. So you, I had to, you made some assumptions on some numbers. You had to have a numbers of hotel rooms or numbers of condos at $2,300 apiece.
Yes.
Is that, is that what the, the economy says? Is that what it says that we should have?
Based on our market research here, we, we, we look at different areas and more or less the average, like around $2,300 rent per month. So we, we use that number there to actually come up with these numbers, because there's nothing there, except you have to do this market research. You know, that, that's how we do our work. And even when we used to be with the governor's office or legislature, we did the same thing. You know, whatever is available there, secondary data.
I, I saw your numbers in, in, in the hotel business. I have a lot of friends in the hotel business, but you, you had 100% occupancy rate too, didn't you?
No, we assumed that.
I didn't see, I didn't see a percentage in there.
Uh, should be.
Generally, the hotel business is about 80, 85% probably in a good market.
Based on what we saw in the area, we assumed 95% occupancy.
95%? Well, that, that's, that'd be in a good market.
Yeah. And this, and we think Bradenton's a great market. We were looking at the tourist numbers just this morning, and we're seeing growth of about 300,000 visitors, just the pure growth.
You know, based on the study that we've found so far, you know, you've got like tourist visitors in this area, Bradenton area, like 3 million people in 2016. And we look at the current growth rate in number of tourists that come to Florida, that's going to be 140 million. So if you apply the 10% on, you know, 3 million, that's another like 300,000 people in fact come to this area, just the area.
New people.
So we don't have problems like, basically like creating demand for this.
Yeah.
Because it's just a sheer number of people coming here. And also, you look at the population of Manatee County, it's grown by like, what?
11,000 per year.
11,000. These are the people that come and live here every year. So, you know, you talk about the demand, there is a demand for this.
So in a hotel, most of the revenue that's generated from that is, is hotel bed tax?
TDT.
TDC tax. And we don't receive any of that, that comes through the TDC. Did we receive any of that?
Mayor, Councilor, the 28% increase year over year that has recently been calculated by a local TDC, meaning that we grew by 28% this year from last year, goes to the TDC and is distributed amongst the local governments through the county. When you say we don't receive it, we do not receive direct appropriation or allocation of it, but we do receive certain things that are provided by it.
Right. So you understand in your calculations, they would be way off because we don't directly receive that. That goes to the TDC and then they, they incorporate that out to whoever they...
We accounted for the TDT not going into the Tourist Development Trust Fund, not going directly to the city.
Your, your figures included, we didn't get any of that tax off that, because that's the only tax they were going to generate, other than maybe had food sales.
Well, you're going to generate property tax.
Uh, ad valorem?
Property tax. If we don't waive it, yeah. If we don't waive it, and I'll make a comment to, and then I'm done. Hotel across the street, great, great hotel, it's been, it's been very lucrative for the investors, but we did waive 15 years ad valorem tax on it. And we did give away the first floor of our $15 million garage forever for it, and we did waive the impact fees. And so we have an enormous, not a small contribution, an enormous contribution in that hotel. Thank you.
I do want to correct one thing. The city did not give away the first floor. We gave away 100 parking spots somewhere in the city. So if we do other things, we can adjust. If we do a development here, we can ask that developer to give us 100 spaces in that and, and recover our 100 spaces. So there, there was a lot of options that, that we went through as a council at that time to work within situations. And when you talk about the TDC, we don't get direct dollars back from them, but we get direct impact from monies that is, comes into through the city, through other projects that we do. And so we are getting dollars from it, but we do, it's just in a different way. And that's done throughout the state, because of TDCs, that's how they operate and go. So there is, there is impact back to us, so thank you. Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be a little redundant and agree with one of my colleague's great presentation.
Thank you.
I don't have the luxury of history, but I do know that, you know, maybe there were some times when the public didn't really agree with what, or where we were going with things. But however, that's history, and irregardless of that history, this tool will be quite beneficial in, as we move forward. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased and I'm, I'm looking forward to plugging in the numbers and playing with it a little bit and figuring out what's the best for the city. So thank you.
Mayor, if I could just be heard?
Yeah, let me just make one comment, if that's all right, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Ms. Coachman. And I, I agree with that comment about the plug and play kind of, because as we go forward and we do get these opportunities from developers coming in, we're going to be able to say, is it 10% hotel? Is it 90% this? Is it 10% this? And see what the economic impact. And I think it's very important when we go forward with this and as the council gets this back and to make this very important decision. And, and again, not in a rushing way, but with an educated way, with information that's going to be in front of us. And, and we know that, that there is that opportunity, and I think this is a great tool, and I appreciate the council actually doing that, and I appreciate the opportunity because, great job. And I think the people that I talk to out in our community are excited, from the chamber to the business people, to the, the people in the neighborhoods, at the HOAs, and, and it's going to be easy to go out and show them that. So thank you very much. Mr. Perry?
Just briefly, Mayor, I think the, some of the key takeaways is that, the, the first assumption, and, and I think Counselor Sanders was asking this question about where did you come up with this allocation of a million square feet? Generally speaking, that's because we can go up eight stories in a T6 and another eight bonuses just by meeting lead, I'm sorry, lead gold or silver standards, which typically energy efficiency that most people build to anyway in today's environment. So the assumption was given to them that, generally speaking, with this four acre parcel and the dimensional footprint of it, how much can you build per floor? Because if you want to go vertical and you got to come to total number of square footage, you got to do a little bit of math, not particularly complicated, but generally speaking, it's about 65,000 to 75,000 per floor within that. That includes a parking deck of some sort, too. Under outbuilding code, if you went up, I think I estimated at 13 stories, that's where the million square feet comes from, because they have to start somewhere. Now, you all could say, we just wanted eight stories, or we want it 16, or, or we want, you know, even look at higher up to the total maximum T6. And the tool will, will induce that, what the ultimate calculation is for each particular metrics, financial metrics. This particular one that was presented, the numbers related to this assumption is based on 37.5% hotel, 37.5% condo, permanent housing, and then the second and third story being 12.5%, probably being office space for high-end type clients. The, the first floor would be retail, food, beverage, entertainment. That's what's being built. If you look around Florida waterfronts, and, and there's a reason why that's being built, because it maximizes tax revenue, it maximizes GDP, and it provides the proper financial type of structure for a developer that's going to have to get a coalition of investors to bring 500 to 600 million, almost probably about a half a billion dollars, to build this type of project. You have those two type of major assets at 37.5% each, being the hotel and, and the condo. The benefit of the condo to the developer is that they can pre-sell and then close on those as permanent units. They recapture a lot of their cost for site preparation, development and the like in doing that. And then the continuous revenue that comes in is through an operational business called the hotel.
Yeah.
That sheds revenue. That's generally speaking, what is probably going to be, you'll, what you'll see around Florida and other waterfront communities and the like, of people that build these types of things and, and the communities that would have them and partner with them. So there was reasonable basis for these types of assumptions, and, and they are fluctuating and flexible. Thank you, appreciate, appreciate the presentation.
Your assumption was 13 floors?
Mr. Sanders, hold on. Are you finished?
I am, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Please let the chair recognize you, Mr. Sanders, go ahead.
Am I recognized? Thank you. You just made assumption that it's 13 floors or 16 floors?
Well, we made an assumption on a square footage basis, so...
Which was, how many square foot?
Zero, it was just one square foot. We did the impact per square foot, so.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's, you can't...
But that's, that's how...
You, you, the cost goes down as the more square feet, you know, there's a, there's a break even point there and then there's a point. There has to be, you had to have some number in order to arrive at that. You can't build one floor.
We build, originally, we build them in 100,000 blocks, 100,000 square foot blocks.
100,000.
And then we pare that down to a single square foot. Yeah. And then that's what's used as inputs in the model, and then you adjust it based on your square footage distributions between hotel, multifamily, multiply that by the total square feet. So the 100,000 square foot would assume a decay, a slight decay to account for bulk.
So what it's saying is that the cost per square foot here is based on 100,000. So then you multiply that with whatever the size of the facility is, and you get that... you get that...
Based on a hundred thousand, like this building is at, at five, fifty-two million dollars, right?
Yeah.
But it's not as sitting as it stands, right? It would have to have retail, it would have to have all those other factors that...
We could convert it to retail.
But that's just the construction cost, doesn't take into account...
Then it goes down to all the others.
Did you consider that if we wanted to convert this building to retail or other issues?
You can plug in a hundred percent on the model and it'll pop out a retail.
You could pop out a hundred thousand, you could pop out the same, same numbers?
No, it's gonna be different. If you put like five hundred thousand square foot for retail, the number's gonna be different.
This is a hundred thousand square feet.
But if it's based on a hundred thousand, then you'll come up with, you know, the numbers that we came up with in the report.
It'd be the same.
It'd be the same in the report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it. And, uh, great job. And we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having us.
Yes, all right. Mrs. Melton, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Our next presentation is the State of the Bay.
Good morning, Dr. Tomasco. Welcome. Thanks for coming back. And we always enjoy your presentations.
You're welcome. Well, I gotta also say, I'm a Hurricanes fan, so I'm not sure how well this'll go.
Not helping you with the conversation.
We'll allow it. There you go.
Was something about wide right or something? I'm not quite...
And wide left. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and particularly Councilwoman Coker, who serves on our policy board. And I believe Mayor Brown was on our policy board earlier. And then Councilwoman Barnaby was on our policy board as well. Oh, there you go. So I'm, I'm new to the SRA program. I'm Dave Tomasco. I'm the director of the Sarasota Bay SRA program. Got a presentation around fifteen minutes on the State of the Bay. So let me just get going here. So first off, a healthy Sarasota Bay is important to our quality of life. There's about twenty thousand people who own boats in Sarasota, Manti County. This is what your constituents do. This is what your neighbors do. This is what I do. We go out on the water on weekends and we like to catch fish, but we also like to stand around in waste deep water and see our feet and not have rafts of macroalgae wrapping around us. It's also important to our economy. There's twenty thousand jobs that are associated with bay-related activities. The Commercial Fishing Village of Cortez, one of the last working waterfronts left in Florida, recreational fishing guides, the waiters and waitresses and bartenders and restaurant owners and the people who rent you jet skis. So twenty thousand jobs. There's also an increase in the dollar per square foot people pay for water, this is kind of relevant, to, to be next to the water. And then real estate definitely reflects that. And so about five years ago, a study was done that showed that the property value uplift associated with proximity of the bay is about three billion dollars. So your ability to like have property taxes to pay for police and fire in schools is a function of like people paying more to live on the water. And they'll do that as long as the water is an amenity. If it's an eyesore, think of how the challenge of, of selling a house during the two thousand and eighteen red tide in Sarasota Bay, or selling property in Tampa Bay during two thousand and twenty-one, or Tampa Bay back in the nineteen seventies. Think about all the development that occurs on the water. And would that happen if the water smells as bad as it can on occasion? So it's important to our economy. It's also important to habitats that are dependent upon water clarity. So we're gonna talk about mangroves, we're gonna talk about seagrass meadows, which you can see off the left-hand side, and the fish and the crabs and the shrimp they support, which are part of our quality of life and our economy and that sort of stuff. And habitat's important because it also helps to support our Florida wildlife heritage. So the last eighteen months have been awful for manatees in the state of Florida, where Manti County was named after the mammal. It's not the mammal named after the county. And, and the last eighteen months, we've lost one-third of the manatee population on the east coast of Florida, mostly because they starved to death. They starved to death because of lack of seagrass, because of declining water quality, because of alga blooms, because of pollution sources. So a third of the population on the east coast epicenters in Indian River Lagoon. You wanna buy cheap waterfront property, go to Merritt Island in Indian River Lagoon. You pay a lot less than you would anywhere around here because the water is kind of gross. So our Florida wildlife heritage matters as well. It's dependent upon water quality and habitats. So if we don't wanna become the Indian River Lagoon, we have to manage nitrogen. So if you wanna have your lawn look green and you wanna grow your citrus tree really fast, add nitrogen, add that fertilizer. If you want your bay to look green and you want algae to grow faster, add nitrogen. But you don't want that. So we're focused on reducing nitrogen loads. How much do we need to reduce it? What is it gonna cost? Who needs to do what? That's kind of what we're focusing on. So we, to determine the health of our bay, we measure everything that's in this cartoon. This cartoon kind of shows the things that happen as you add nutrients to a system. They're not good for a place like Sarasota Bay. And as you add them, you can end up causing more blooms of harmpilago blooms, things like red tide, things like the lymbia algae that's all along the shoreline, particularly last year in Anna Maria Sound. So we're trying to ratchet it back. We're trying to figure out how much of a load reduction we need, what do we need to act upon to get us the best version of Sarasota Bay that we can get realistically. The only thing you have to measure is dipping a water bottle into the bay. But we don't do that. Everything in there is measured by ourselves or our partners. We were out in Little Sarasota Bay Monday, swimming transects at six locations, thirty-six sites. Our partners are doing it. We have volunteers that we've trained to be able to help us figure out the health of this bay. So, our report card is what we're gonna talk about. And our report card is for five different segments of the bay. You guys touch Palmasola Bay and what we call Upper Sarasota Bay. But if you live here, you might just migrate to other parts of the bay as well. So our report card is based on four measurements. Two of them are water chemistry. How much nitrogen's in the water, how much algae's in the water, and then how much algae is grown on the bottom of the bay, and how much seagrass do we have? We measure the fish as well, but it's kind of hard to compare sites to each other because Palmasola Bay is not like the big bay in terms of the fish you can catch. So our report card is based on a reference period, two thousand and six, two thousand and twelve, because this was a healthier bay back during, you know, ten, fifteen years ago. And so that's our reference period. We don't know what this bay was like fifty years ago. We don't know it was like a hundred years ago. But we know two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve, it was a healthier system. So we compare each bay against what it was like during that time period. And we color-code the results because what matters is not the number. What matters is the impression that you get for like, well, what is the trend? Or what do I look like? Or what is it kind of like in our system in the bay? So we're gonna color-code the results. And then blues and greens represent, you know, good conditions. Yellow is caution and red is like, stop, stop what you're doing, something's going wrong here. So color-code each bay compared against itself. And this is what...
Dr. Tomasco, just a real quick question. Can you go back to that previous slide?
Yeah.
So you look at, you're highlighting from the Palmasola Bay south.
Yeah.
And you explain why it's only there?
Yeah, it's kind of like, well, honestly, so the area north of Manti Avenue is not in our jurisdiction, but we work there all the time anyway. During Piney Point, I was working in Palmasola Bay, I was working in Anna Maria Sound, I was working in Tampa Bay. The Manti River is not actually in our jurisdiction, but I don't care. We work in the Manti River all the time anyway, because the Manti River absolutely affects our water quality. So this is our formal jurisdiction, but we work outside of it all the time.
Tampa Bay estuary goes from north of Manti Avenue, even though it coincides with all of this.
I don't know where the heck that came from, but yeah, it's, it's, it makes no sense. But yeah, we, we work really tightly together, particularly during the Piney Point response. But yeah, our jurisdiction and our water quality in our report card is sixty-four south. And that actually is a big point, because the area north of Manti Avenue is the area that had the biggest problems last year. And in particular, I'd say north of Cortez Road. But the big problems we had with all those alga blooms, that was in the northern part of the bay. And so outside of our jurisdiction, I didn't care. We worked there anyway.
I just wanted the public to understand why we're only doing that, because it's a different estuary.
Yeah, yeah, the Tampa Bay SRA program, who we work hand in glove with. So the, the way to look at this roughly, we'd like you to, is like, look at two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve, lots of blues and lots of greens across the system. Across the bay, this was a healthier system back then. A lot of blues and a lot of greens means that it was a healthy system. Blackburn Bay shifted into the yellow for two thousand and eleven, I don't know why. But Palmasola Bay continues to be a healthy system. There's a lot of development around Palmasola Bay, but the way it developed has actually been less of a pollution problem than a lot of other areas. And that's something to learn from. So Palmasola Bay continues to be a fairly healthy system. The upper part of the bay was good until twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And we think kind of three things happened. The twenty sixteen red tide, twenty seventeen Hurricane Irma, and twenty eighteen red tide, which was ten times as strong as the twenty sixteen red tide. Since then, our water quality has come back. If you've been out in that part of the bay, it's gorgeous. We've had ten-foot visibility. It looks beautiful, even though we're in the middle of the wet season. So the problems we had in the upper bay, we think are sort of episodic, if you would, rather than some kind of chronic pollution event. But the lower part of the bay, we shifted into yellow back in twenty thirteen. And that, you can't blame on red tides and hurricanes. What we think happened back then is, Manti County and Sarasota County don't have AWT plants. City Bradenton is an AWT, so is City of Sarasota, Palmetto. Sarasota County had overflow of non-AWT effluent that totaled seven hundred and fifty million gallons that occurred for five years. And that set us back decades in the lower part of the bay. And you guys have had problems with your wastewater infrastructure with flows as well, but you're acting upon it. And it took five years for Sarasota County to do what needs to be done on that. And that set us back for a long time. But it is being acted upon. We haven't had overflows for a while. And you can see the last couple of years, we shifted to green again. So we think we're on the right track. And that's kind of like the message we like to leave you with right here, is we seem to be on the right track of recovering our water quality, which is good. But seagrass, which is the biological indicator of the health, is lagging. It's kind of like your 401K. It's a lot easier to go down than go up. So it's a lot easier to lose seagrass than to gain it. And the first thing you have to do is you gotta get your water quality back. And we think that's where we are. But our seagrass is lagging. We think it's gonna come back. We think the conditions are right, but it's not there yet. So this is not good. But in the Indian River Lagoon, they lost sixty percent of their seagrass. And that's the reason why they had the problems with the manatees starving to death. So, how do we keep on track? We keep on track by quantifying. So we're not gonna give you generic guidance about, well, like you reduce pollution. We're gonna tell you how much. And we're gonna actually talk about who needs to do what. We have to obtain agreement from you guys representing the local governments, but also the general public. Because if you do everything that you're supposed to do for wastewater and stormwater, and the general public is over-fertilizing their lawns, or blowing grass clippings out into storm drains, or not picking up after their dogs, then you're not gonna get the job done. But if they are doing everything and you have problems with aging wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, then that's gonna be a challenge. So for us to fix the problems in the bay, we're gonna have to have the wastewater, stormwater, and the public participation all working together. And we can enact that through kind of like commitments for local governments. What are you gonna do for your wastewater plant? You already have a consent decree for dealing with the problems you've had. It's already moving us in the right direction. So roughly, what we need to do to get back to a healthier bay is we need to reduce our nutrient loads. If we compare the time when we were a healthier bay in the last couple of years, our nutrient loads increased by about twenty percent or twelve tons of dissolved inorganic nitrogen. A pound of nitrogen can give you three hundred pounds of algae. So twelve tons more is a heck of a lot more algae in the bay. So we need to find ways to reduce our nitrogen load by about twelve tons. And the thing is, that's doable. So what we have is controllable nitrogen loads are much greater than the twelve-ton increase. So if we act on the spills and the overflows and the overapplication of nitrogen-rich reclaimed water, you don't have nitrogen-rich reclaimed water, but Manti County does. And so Manti County, if you're careful with the application, it's not gonna be a problem. But in Sarasota County, with their B Ridge plant, if you applied thirty inches per year, you're adding twice what a lawn needs. And that's gonna be an excess that can come into your system. So we know what we need to do. We're now gonna start kind of coming up with commitments about who's gonna do what to upgrade their wastewater treatment plant, what kind of stormwater retrofits make sense, that sort of stuff. So, however, and this is where we're kind of like at right now, the future is not gonna be like the past. Things are changing. Our population growth over the last thirty years is the reason why we were a success story and then it slipped away from us, because we didn't account for population growth. It doesn't mean you can't have good water quality with population growth. That's not true at all. The Thames River estuary is much healthier than it was a hundred and fifty, two hundred, three hundred years ago. They actually have data that goes back that far, because they were doing the right things for wastewater. So we just have to account for population growth and offset that impact. But we're also seeing climate change. It's happening. Our next thirty years is not gonna be like our last thirty years. And we're gonna go through a little bit of the data to talk about this challenge. Sea level is one of the things. So when we talk about climate change, we're not talking about a report or a model that nobody knows if it's accurate or not. We're talking about real data. We can give you the links to it. You can look at it. You can download it, give it to your cousin, whatever, to look at. This is sea level data. Monthly averages at the St. Pete gauge goes back to nineteen forty-seven. The tide changes over the course of day. I've been a boat owner for thirty years, you better know that. But on average for each month, if we plot these one thousand data points, you can see there's a lot of variability, but there's also a trend. But the neat thing about the trend is if you look at it in closer detail, you see something pop up. So this red line represents five-point moving average, and we're gonna look at it in twenty-year timescales roughly. Forty-seven to nineteen sixty, a lot of variability, but you see where that red line starts and where it ends, it's about the same place. Nineteen sixty, nineteen eighty, a lot of variability, but not a whole lot of difference. If we look at nineteen eighty to the year two thousand, which is on the left, we can see a little bit of an increase. But look at two thousand to the year twenty twenty. That red line starts off at zero, ends at zero point five, that's half a foot, that's six inches in twenty years. Over the period of record, sea level's gone up about an inch a decade, but over the last twenty years, it's gone up at three inches a decade. So if we look at the last twenty years, we can find a way to express that in a mathematical equation. That's what that red line represents. You can see a lot of variables, a lot of numbers higher than that, a lot of numbers lower than that. But you can see that red line kind of goes in between that cloud of data. If we plug in numbers on that, our estimate is that nine more inches of sea level rise over the next thirty years. That's not terrifying. That's not three feet, it's not six feet. But it's something. And it's not nine, it's not nine feet, it's nine inches. That's what we think will happen over the next thirty years, if the next thirty years is like the last twenty years. The reason why that's important is because that's an impact in your city right now. This is Riverview Boulevard at Twenty-First, Twenty-Second Street. This isn't a king tide. King tide's happening in the fall. This is in May. So this is a high tide, which is a spring tide or an eep tide. So full moon, new moon, this is what it's like in that street right now. That's not rainfall. And that is water from the Manti River coming up into the streets. And so the picture on the right-hand side, maybe you can see that little kind of like halo effect? That's water being pumped into the street from the storm drain. At the bottom of that seawall are little holes. And it doesn't make sense. Why would you have holes in the bottom of seawall? Because wouldn't that allow water to come in? No, that allows water to go back into the river as the tide drops. So this is gonna get more difficult over the next couple of decades than it is right now. And we want you guys to be proactive about this, rather than like the city of Miami Beach, where they're just taking flooded street water and they're just pumping it out into Biscayne Bay. There's gotta be a better way to do this than what's being done there. We're also concerned about mangroves. Mangroves are important for fish and crabs and, and birds. They're important to water quality. The tannins that come from decomposing mangrove leaves help keep alga blooms under control. And we have a lot of mangroves that are on the outside of seawalls. And if we don't have some way to allow them to migrate upslope with another couple of inches of sea level rise, we're gonna lose mangroves. They'll drown on the outside of seawalls. So we have to figure out some way to allow mangroves to migrate upslope with a couple inches of sea level rise. One of the things we've got is got a hundred years of temperature data at the Sarasota Bradenton Airport. And this is the number of freezes per decade. So divide it by ten and you get number of freezes per year on average. We used to average twenty to thirty freezes per decade, so two to three freezes per year. In the last decade, we've had three freezing temperatures in ten years. So think of it this way. I've lived in Florida since eighty-two, been a homeowner since nineteen ninety. Remember putting out sheets across your landscaping and your orange trees? When's the last time you did that? Because it doesn't freeze hardly anymore. Our water temperature in the Gulf of Mexico is getting warmer. Sarasota Bay is getting warm earlier. The recreational fishing guides know this. So nuisance alga blooms are gonna have a growing season that's not gonna be maybe nine months, but ten months. And if it never gets cold, you're not gonna have a ten-month growing season for alga blooms. You're gonna have a ten-year growing season. So this is a challenge that we're, we just have to like deal with. Warm temperatures, warmer air, it's gonna influence things like tropical storms. They are heat engines. Hurricanes and tropical storms feed off the energy. And if it's warmer, there're gonna be more of them and they're gonna be more powerful. This is a hundred and fifty years of storm data. And it shows the last forty years, we've had an increase in the number of tropical storms in the North Atlantic Basin. Weirdly, it's not worldwide. It's happening in the North Atlantic Basin. Don't know why. But it's not the case in Indian Ocean, it's not the case in the Pacific, but it's unfortunately the case where we live. But the other thing is, on the right-hand side, category-three hurricanes and higher, it used to be fairly common that you'd have years where you didn't have a category-three. And you see all the, the dots on zero means there was a year where there was no major hurricanes. But there's, it's less and less common for you to have a year where you don't have a major hurricane. So more hurricanes, more powerful hurricanes are something that we just need to be aware of, or likely it happened. So, sounds kind of depressing. So what can you do? Well, you can do a lot. And actually, this place, we think we're really proud about the level of involvement. We have hundreds of volunteers, people who live in your neighborhoods, people who vote for you, who work for the SRA program in doing, building oyster reefs and doing stream cleanups and helping to like, you know, get rid of native vegeta, excuse me, get rid of native, get rid of exotic vegetation plant, to allow our shorelines to become more resilient with the expected changes in sea level. Vertical oyster gardens, we're ramping this up big time because we want people to put things underneath their docks that can be good for habitat and good for water quality. Oysters have to attach to an oyster. So we're working with local restaurants and taking their oyster shells. And we're actually stringing them on wire and then hanging them underneath docks so that we can get an oyster reef growing underneath your dock. Because we've got lots of docks that could be a better habitat and better for water quality. We can help you with that if you're interested, if you know homeowners that are interested. Reducing your personal pollution footprint, which means don't fertilize in a wet season. It's, it's a waste of money. It's no, not, it's not necessary. The rainfall has enough nitrogen for your... The rainfall has enough nitrogen for your lawn. Take your rain spouts, excuse me, your gutters, and then reroute your spout. Put it into the grass. Don't put it in the driveway, because that, that's a way to reduce your personal pollution footprint. Stormwater ponds, we're working with you guys and Manti County on the GT Bray site to develop a stormwater pond example that people can extrapolate to their homeowners' association, because there's hundreds of private stormwater ponds that can do a better job treating stormwater runoff than what we have right now. And just ending it with this, which future do you want? I took the picture on the left in Sarasota Bay. The picture on the right is Indian River Lagoon. Think of the property values, think about the jobs lost if we become the Indian River Lagoon. And no one here wants to be part of that. None of your neighbors, none of your constituents, and certainly not us. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to me. Info@SarasotaBay or email me at Dave. We have a website. We're on Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, whatever you need to reach us. And thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, or time for questions.
Questions? Ms. Barnaby? Any question?
No, sir. I feel like he may be preaching to the choir a little bit, because those of us that have been involved with the estuary program know exactly what the problems are, and we know what some of the solutions can be. We just need to convince people that they should try it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Do you have any data on the Manatee River at all? Does anybody have? You know, that's, some of these pictures you're showing is right on the Manatee River. And we know we're putting oyster beds in around our new park.
Yeah.
And I know neighbors are putting it underneath their docks. And hopefully that, that helps. But do you have any data on Manatee versus Palmasola? Palmasola to me is like, we don't have any buildings there. I mean, it's just a strip of ground to get to the islands. So it's never going to probably be an issue for us as a city.
Yeah, Manti River belongs to, if you will, the Tampa Estuary Program. They do have a lot of data on it. We've had problems in the Manti River the last couple of years. Part of it is like overflow from wastewater treatment plant. You know, it's about 100 million gallons. It was not inconsequential. But also, the biggest problem we've had recently is the Piney Point spill. That was about 70, 80,000 bags of fertilizer added to Tampa Bay in 10 days. And it was mixed very thoroughly. It was mixed about a thousandfold by the time it got here. But a thousandfold dilution of Piney Point is enough to increase our nutrient content by 50%. That stuff came out at 10 times the concentration of the worst performing wastewater treatment plant in our watershed. So if you turn that 200 million gallons of Piney Point into wastewater equivalents, it would be a spill of 2 billion gallons. It was the worst thing in decades. And it definitely affected Manti River, Palmasola Bay, and Amara Sound.
One other question. How does increased boating and docks hurt, or I'm sure they don't help, hurt the manatees?
Our biggest cause of death in our local waters is boat collisions for manatees. And but like, and I apologize, I haven't looked at it lately, but when I looked at it a couple of months ago, we had three manatee deaths in Sarasota and Manti Counties. At the same time, Brevard County had 300. So we're always going to have collisions with boats and manatees. You know, the slow-speed zones make a lot of sense. Better awareness, like drunk boating is the biggest problem, more than anything else. And so, but I would say, at the same time, the, the reason why it's such a bleak picture for manatees on the east coast of Florida is not because of being hit, it's because they're starving to death. Their seagrass meadows are down 60%. The remaining 40% is so sparse that their food supply is down 90, 95%. And that picture I showed you of all the manatees, I mean, who wouldn't want to like, you know, feed those little manatee? But the reason why they're being bottle-fed is because their mothers starved to death. It was a really bad year for female manatees. And it's a matriarchal society. Manatees learn from their mothers where to go. And we've lost so many mothers that they're not breeding this year. There's hardly any new manatees being born on the east coast of Florida. And those new manatees that come out of these rehabilitation centers, they won't know how to act like a manatee. They won't know where to go. They won't know what to eat. They don't know where to go when the water temperature declines, because so many females have been lost. So it's really a bleak story on the east coast of Florida. They're not going to disappear in Florida, but on the east coast of Florida, a third of them are already dead.
Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did previously serve on Sarasota Bay Estuary.
Thank you.
I'm currently a member of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, which we're the host of the Tampa Bay, Tampa Bay Estuary and a project called One Bay, which is very active, very active on, because Tampa Bay was declared dead back in like the 50s.
Yeah.
A great, great restoration project is underway. So what I want to say is that there will be next year, a need for someone to take the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. And in, along with that is the, the estuary program, which is, we are in that estuary program. Tampa Bay very much affects us.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, you kind of listen to this in like, what can I do to be part of a solution? And it looks like, you know, homeowners and their grass fertilization, I mean, the, are there, but of course, you know, we all want our lawns. And are there natural fertilizers? I mean, I'm sure it's a little bit more expensive, but I think we'd be wor, we'd, we'd be okay doing it if we saw the, what the effects are not doing it.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Are there natural fertilizers that you can?
I live in a homeowners' association now, but I always fertilized my lawn, but I didn't over-fertilize my lawn. And I think the, one of the key things would be slow-release fertilizer, but apply it. So a lot of people, they'll dump the fertilizer into the thing, or they'll push, and then at the end of like doing their lawn, if there's some stuff left in there, they'll like finish it up. No, stop. Okay? So the reality is, if you follow the directions, you'll do a good job. Also, sweep up your driveway afterwards, blow it back into there. Don't allow those little pellets to like, you know, just stay on your driveway or, or your sidewalk, because next time it rains, that is just delivering liquid fertilizer. So if you hate what Piney Point did to our systems, and I do too, then don't be part of the problem. Don't contribute your own liquid fertilizer. But I've always fertilized my lawn, but I do it the way you're supposed to, with IFIS guidance. And I think that's one of the things we need to work with, is like to communicate to people. We're not against fertilizing. We're against over-fertilizing. And if you got reclaimed water from Brayton, you might still want to fertilize. If you have reclaimed water from Manti County, you don't need to fertilize at all. You have enough nutrients in that reclaimed water that you don't need fertilized. You just don't.
Mr. Perry?
Just briefly. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Dr. Tomasco. I'm kind of new to the area, at least locally, and trying to get skilled up a little bit on estuary health and the marine biology. It's a fact that I come from the West, and we didn't have these issues other than the Rio Grande, which isn't that type of waterway. But some of the things that we're kind of looking at, and I'm putting on the board for future development, is like injection technologies and trying to get out of the river. And of course, the Florida Legislature has mandated to get out of the river, but I think it's 2032.
Pretty close, yeah.
Yeah. And what are your feelings about injection technology, where really, you wouldn't have any sort of permits, the need for types of permits that would put water back into the river and things like that, DEP permits?
Well, you guys are an AWT plant, number one.
Can you explain what that, explain what that is?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, sorry. You know, getting carried away. So AWT is Advanced Wastewater Treatment. The reason why Tampa Bay is healthier now than it was is because City of Tampa in 1979 upgraded to a technology that reduced the nutrient concentration of effluent by 90%. But the oldest AWT plant in the United States is Palmetto, pre-Dade State. So City of Palmetto, where I live, had the first AWT wastewater treatment plant in the United States. So Brayton has that. And so the nutrient content is really not a problem. The problem is wet season. Nobody wants reclaimed water in the wet season. So what do you do with it? You can build big storage tanks and everything like that, but that's going to be overwhelmed pretty quickly. So deep well injection has been used by Manti Counties for about 30 years. And deep well injection is used a lot of the time. So, you know, the thing with deep well injections, it's not raw wastewater. It's treated effluent that can be used. You could spread it on someone's neighborhood tomorrow, but in the wet season, no one wants it. So they're typically put at very deep aquifers. It's not anyone's drinking water supply. We're talking about drilling it down to 3,000 feet. No one gets water from 3,000 feet. So the reality is, deep well injection has been used for decades. It's one of the reasons why this bay is cleaner, because Manti County went to deep well injection for wet season storage back in around 1990 time period. So it's tried and true. It's been used all over the place. It's treated effluent. It's not raw sewage.
It's great to hear, because I think that's going to be our next phase of water treatment.
Yeah.
We're trying to remediate, but as you pointed to, the.
But you have effluent good enough that people want it. Sarasota County has effluent that's got too high nitrogen. Lakewood Ranch doesn't want Sarasota County's water. So if you want to lock it up, get your water to someone who wants it, because it's low enough nutrient content that people want it. They don't want Sarasota County's right now.
I just got the 101 course on that issue regarding Lakewood Ranch wanting the reclaimed water from Brayton opposed to Sarasota, because we are advanced wastewater treatment and the like. And so hearing it from a third-party independent person like you verifies a lot of what I'm hearing.
The reason why our water bodies are healthier is because of what you guys have done with wastewater.
And just thank you. Great job. And again, it's, we like when you come. I think you give some great insight, and you give it the, the way it needs to be done, in my opinion. One of the things I think we, we really need to, to thank our legislative and our county, because Piney Point, you know, a lot of people, they'd said Brayton, 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 but it wasn't us, but it was our county, and it affects all of us. But we also, you know, hope that situation gets solved sooner than later, because rainy season is here, and we, we really can't afford another situation.
There are going to be releases that you'll hear about over the next couple of weeks that is not the same as what happened before. It's a much smaller volume, and it's much better water. It's basically salty water with much lower nutrient content. So it's not the same as what happened last year.
Right. And the county and through legislative help, and Governor DeSantis has done that next step. Now we want to finally solve it, which is going to take a little bit of time. So thank you very much, and we thank you for being here.
Thanks for your moral support and your financial support, too.
Yep, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, or the citizen comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First up would be Bruno Kapaniskas, I believe. Yep. And you have three minutes, and this is non-agenda items. And please state your name and, and your association. And you have three minutes.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. Bruno Kapaniskas, I'm the Government Affairs Manager for the Southwest Florida Water Management District, better known as SWF MUD. I'm basically brand-new to the job, three months, just getting my wheels under me and getting up to speed. I recently met with Mr. Perry and your Director of Utilities, Mr. McClellan. I had a good discussion, and I just am here to introduce myself as your point of contact. And if you'd like to meet with me individually, more than happy to do it. Very interesting presentation from Dr. Tomasco. I'm looking forward to meeting with him and his group. And whatever SWF MUD can do for the City of Bradenton in providing quality water, we're here to do it. And I'm your point of contact for that going forward. So I appreciate the time for this short introduction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We appreciate it and look forward to working with you. And I know there's, there's a lot of things that SWF MUD over the years has maybe got some black eyes at times, but, but we're here to work with you and make it better.
Certainly.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Bye. All right. Next up is Betty Sales Rhodes. You know, please state your name and address. And some of us know you, but others don't. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor Brown and Councilman. Okay, I'm here today, I'm here because of the Bradenton Police Department. And you know, I was looking at some things, and they mission supposed to be dedicated to excellence and policy, to professionalism, courage, and transparency. But some are doing it, and some are not. I need to bring to the council, Mayor, you over the police department, I need to bring to your attention this. On July the 8th, going down, I'll pick it, going down 9th, my goddaughter was going down 9th Street. And a patrol car was parked over by Tropicana. You know how to be up in the bushes. She went through the roundabout, and when she went through the roundabout, it was a police car parked over to the little country store. Okay, when she passed by, and I know for a fact this guy did this, because you need to check, check the record or check their phone numbers. Because this girl had this car for six years, six years, never been stopped for tenant window. When she passed to go back, to go back down 9th to go to her house, and I know it supposed to be a call in saying, I'm doing a traffic stop. And I don't know whether that done or not. But anyway, they stopped her, and you can't ask this question, why have I been stopped? I got on my seatbelt and not speeding or anything. And the guy just said, give me, show me your license, you know, registration insurance. She did. And then she said, well, I'm being pulled for, say your tenant window. So she was just thinking tenant windows, how long I've been driving this car for six years, six years. So I guess every patrol car do not have that little device that you could go and check to see is that window tenant had. So he said, I'm going to call somebody, let me call somebody to come over here to check this window. And guess who it was? It was Piper. So Piper was parked there, because y'all know what car he was in. And I got that number picked down of him. He needed to stop harassing people, and he needed to do his job. It's a professionalism. It's not. He being very biased, and some of his robocops who's going along with him is doing the same thing. So anyway, he came, I guess, and Piper had the little device, portable device, whatever you all have in your car, but I thinking everybody should have that and check a windows. And I know for the state of Florida, because I always have in my mind, because of different things, that if it's too low, you know, you'll get a ticket and everything. But six years, this is harassment. And that make my blood pressure go up, so I'm gonna file a complaint. And you know, and we go way back. And Mayor, I'm just saying, please check, and I'm not gonna be here long, because I got another meeting to go to, but...
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
I just one more thing, Mayor, and Chief Bevan haven't gave me report yet when we met with her.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. If you want to walk out with Chief and get that, and then we will follow up. Next is Bemis Smith.
All right, thank you.
Please come forward. You have three minutes. Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Bemis Smith, 301 Seventeenth Street East, Bradenton. I'm here today as someone who once sat on this dais. I'm not running to return, but I am concerned as a constituent who knows what goes on in council and the impact that a caustic environment can have on morale. We have been living in a political world for a while where it seems that negativity and bullying are perceived by some as governing. They miss that being a governmental leader requires both identification of problems, but more importantly, a plausible plan to correct them, not just general platitudes about what you're going to do, but never do. While viewing the video of the last council meeting, I witnessed questionable vitriolic attacks on the Police Department and other city employees. What struck me most was that the attacks didn't appear to be primarily disagreements on actionable policies, but more about a general dislike of city staff by a council member. Traditionally, council members meet with staff privately to express concerns, but if not successful, they use their time at meetings to sway other council members, not to attack those in disagreement. In recent council meetings, it seemed one member was more intent on dressing down those he disagreed with than trying to present his views on the situation. These attacks create a hostile environment within the city and do nothing to serve constituents, because bullying and hostility don't improve things and address the issues that need attention. I was reminded of a comment that came up in a court deposition that is available at the Clerk's office. At general background, the testimony was a Bradenton Police Captain testifying about a pocket dial he received from Councilman Sanders. He wasn't sure who Sanders was talking to, but he testified as to what he heard. Quote, "There was a discussion regarding a Bradenton Herald reporter that Mr. Sanders and Mr. Councilman Roth had dirt on that they were holding for the right time to come out with on the dirt." I took notes of the conversation. I don't have those notes in front of me, because I wasn't, as I said, wasn't really anticipating discussing the rest of the conversation that I overheard. But that was one of the other issues, was him and Mr. Roth's dirt on one of the local Bradenton Herald reporters. The reporter was later fired from the Herald, but did the efforts benefit the citizens who our council members served, or did it become just one more notch for bullying? Thank you for listening to me today. The city government was a hostile, uncomfortable place years ago, and it appears we are returning to that position. While I understand my request is probably futile, I ask that council as a whole work to address issues of our city and not allow pettiness to rule the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have no other cards, so we'll be moving on. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are requesting approval of the consent agenda items A through JJ.
All right, and just one comment before. I know this is a huge consent agenda list, but when you look, we haven't had a meeting, you know, we're in our summer break in the middle kind of of it. And I first off would like to thank staff for doing what they did, but especially Madam Clerk Melton there for really working hard and getting caught up on the minutes, because I know that's something that was done before, where you did a lot of the minutes as the deputy clerk, where when Sharon Beauchamp was here, she was doing the other duties. But now you basically take care of that, and we're working through the process. Mr. Perry's done a great job at getting staff in, but now I think we're at a point. So I appreciate you taking that extra effort during the time we've had off over the last five weeks to get that done, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a group effort.
Yep, the Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Roth?
Well, I will move to approve the consent agenda, but I did want to pull item DD.
DD, okay.
Village of the Arts South Drainage Project.
So DD, Mr. Mayor. DD by Roth.
I'd like to pull a...
Yes, sir, Mr. Sanders.
Item B.
B?
B, like in boy.
Just one B?
One B.
Okay, one B.
I've never added, used the alphabet twice here, and item U.
Well, item U. Okay, so B and U, okay. All right, so Mr. Roth, you agree to those pullings?
Yes, yes.
And you, you're the second, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item, just single B, right? Not B?
Yes.
Okay, single B and U. U and double D.
Okay, perfect.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda minus DD, B and U. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Okay, so approved. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you. To Mr. Perry, do we have the staff here for it?
We do, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to pull out just because we we've done something that's been a long time and a big improvement here. This is the Village of the Arts South Drainage Project. I know that when we had the tapestry project over there in the Village of the Arts, I don't remember how many years ago, forever. I remember sitting through all those meetings, and the three things that I thought that we could, because there was just so much discussion, I thought the things I heard, stuff that the city could approve on, was lighting, signage, and drainage. And so the people don't know, the Village of the Arts is one of these areas of the city that's kind of low, and when you get a lot of rain, there's really very little place the water can go to. I know that the first thing we did was focused on, the worst part of it was Tenth Avenue behind the motorworks over there, and we launched into that, and we were, we expected it was going to be about a $2 million project, and we got it done for about $350,000. Basically, what we're doing is rerouting the water. The water has to either go over to Ware's Creek or the Manatee River. It has to go to one of those two spots. So, and how the pipes go around, and we found out from Tenth Avenue, it was kind of going around in circles to get out, and we found a clearer road. So I just wanted our staff to, what we've got now is a bigger, a much bigger drainage problem for the for the village that I think is going to help them quite a bit. And I just wanted to just, you know, make it known for the citizens of what we've been doing. So I would ask for our staff to say, you know, like, how, when did this start? When will commence? When will be completed, and how much of an impact will it have?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Mr. Perry. Kim Clayback, Public Works Infrastructure Engineer Staff. We have worked to improve drainage, lighting, and lighting specifically in Village of the Arts. This first project that we're awarding that's on the agenda today is a $2.3 million project that is co-funded by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. We started the process for this five years ago in 2017. It was identified in our watershed plan that was completed in 2017, and we've worked on conceptual design. We are routing water away from Ware's Creek, which is an overburdened system, over to the pond across from our wastewater plant, and then it will be sent north to the Manatee River. So we're reducing flow to Ware's Creek. We're providing treatment in the pond for previously untreated water, which goes to what Dave was talking about in his Estuary Program presentation. And we're providing a drainage system that is more consistent with the Florida conditions and the design practices that we have in place now, as opposed to when it was built in 1950. There were different, there's different considerations. So that is, that is what is before you today for approval. It is for a $2.3 million, a $2 million construction project. So the other money was tied up in design and survey. We're also doing, just as an adjacent project, the intersection improvements at Ninth and Ninth are also going to include some drainage improvements on 12th Street. That's not part of what's in the consent agenda, but just so you all know that it's going to happen, it's about $300,000 of our approved budget that we're putting into adding structures to 12th Street to, again, reroute flow out of the bowl that is Village of the Arts and take it to the Manatee River and to improve some different conditions at 12th Street and 11th Avenue.
Okay, so, but to be clear, so the benefit, the 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 bonus is that by rerouting it, that we're going to be putting it into retention, we're going to get like the nutrients out of it and all that. But the the main purpose for this was to relieve flooding.
That is correct, and we're going to be taking 22 houses out of the floodplain between 13th and 17th avenues.
Okay.
Between Ninth and 14th Street in that block.
Mr. Roth, I just want to thank you. I know we're not on a farewell tour yet, but but thank you for championing that over the years. And I think the residents, you know, we get, we get a lot of blame for a lot of stuff. We don't get a lot of credit at times. But thank you for championing that, and I think it's something that when you talk about what the city's doing and what grants and funding we get, we work hard as a staff to really do that. So thank you for for bringing that up. One question came up, where are we at with Ninth and Ninth Construction? I know that's not part of this, but since you brought it up, because there's a lot of people that are asking me that it's been sitting for a while now.
Well, if we could manufacture concrete faster, I think we'd be in a better position. We're waiting on the structures, the drainage structures that go in there and for 12th Street as well.
It's the supply chain and that stuff. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I wasn't looking for a bonus like that. But my point is to people, it takes a long time for us to get this stuff done, and that's why it's so important that we start, because, you know, we did, you know, it took five years, and this was phase two. We started on this a lot long ago, but it's, we will, we have a plan.
And I think the last event we had was, what, 11 inches in such a short time? And Mr. Perry and I went yesterday to Sarasota, but coming, I was coming back from Sarasota when that event happened, where we really had the flooding in Village of the Arts. We all got the pictures. But if you were driving down 41 from south of 53rd Avenue to Cortez Road, that was underwater, and there was many cars. So it wasn't just the city of Bradenton. It was an event that happened in the county that nobody would have been able to overcome at that point, so.
And that is, those are the events that we unfortunately can't can't plan for, but we can make improvements on the the day in, day out. And that's what all of these are for, our three inches or smaller storms, which is about 90% of the storms that we see in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth, do you have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I moved to approve item DD.
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
And two.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Item B. Can I borrow your item B? I've lost my, there, item B is mobility fees for, permit fees for the scooters that we've approved. And it says a permit fee of $1,000. Is that for only the people that's doing those, like Bird? Bird is our people we've contracted. Is that only for them, or is that for individuals, is what I'm trying to say?
Yes, sorry, Dr. Kristoff St. Louis, that is only for the operator, which is Bird.
So any citizen, to include myself, for you, can use their own scooter, provided it's covered under the requirements of not too much horsepower, whatever, and they do not have to pay a permit fee?
Correct. You can use your own. This is strictly for the operator.
Strictly for Bird. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? We'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
And so carries four to zero, Councilman Roth out of the room. Mr. Sanders?
Next time, it was item U, is a purchase of 15, 2022 Ford police interceptor vehicles. And I understand there's a cost savings, $134,000 if you buy them now versus whenever. When were they actually scheduled to be purchased? Are they scheduled to be purchased next year, or when?
So this is, this is an opportunity for us...
Please state your name for the record, please.
Captain Thiers with the Police Department. I've been doing the capital vehicle project for this year. This is an opportunity in light of what's going on in our country with supply chain and inflation costs. A chance arose for us to to early purchase 15 patrol cars now versus the October 1 budget. We did this about two to three years ago. We've done it before, and so it's it's worked out in our favor. And this, for an example, we ordered 12 cars last October, and we're still, they're trickling in one at a time. So it's, it's a time savings and it's a cost savings to the city.
So you're moving funds out of the next year's fiscal year into this year to purchase them early, to save $100,000, some odd thousand dollars? Nobody has a problem with that, as long as it's not double dipping and going over and having 15 more cars next year also. So I've already looked at your budget. I don't see there's a decline.
If 15 cars were removed from...
This is almost a million bucks, $828,000 in exact. So you're telling me that $828,000 will be moved out of next year's budget, and we're going to pay for them now, which is to get this discount, which is a good thing. But we aren't going to have that in next year's budget.
Correct. Good morning, Mayor and Councilman Lance Williams, Assistant Director OMB. We're actually, we're, there was in the budget to purchase the vehicles through general funds, and we actually are going to use this year's impact funds for police to buy the vehicles and realize the cost savings. So the reason you didn't necessarily see it in the budget and then essentially removed from the budget is because we took it out before it was even presented, but we're not using general fund money. We're using impact fee money for the police vehicles.
And we're not ordering 15 October 1?
Correct. Yeah, there aren't additional vehicles being October 1.
They're on a five-year cycle, right? And so you, I understand why you're doing it. I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't want, I saw the budget, and I didn't get into the details yet, because I just got that 600-page document, which is not a big deal, but and I didn't see that in there. But I did see that the the budget is almost identical to last year's, $21 million, so. How, why wouldn't it be less?
And and this is something I think that, you know, we'll cover, obviously, in the workshops and so forth, you know, as we go forward. But there are expenses, you know, with the Police Department with certain, you know, items such as radios that need to be addressed. So we had an opportunity to save money on vehicles and not have it added to the budget in addition to. So we really looked at it as a as a win-win and kind of a win, you know, threefold, by using, being able to use impact fee funds and not use the general fund and then still be able to...
This is coming out of general fund?
Typically.
Come out, police impact?
Yeah, the vehicles are coming out of impact fee.
The impact fee comes from where?
Impact, impact fee comes from the Building Department and the impact fees that are collected through, you know, different construction. Over the years, we've kind of accumulated these funds, and we, with a, with almost a $9,000 savings per vehicle, we felt it was a good opportunity to use.
You know how much we have in that impact fund?
Right now, it's a little over a million, and after this, it'll be roughly about 200, about 250,000.
I think, Mayor and Council, it's important to specify, this is for the police impact fund. It's a variety of different impact funds.
No, 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 I understand the difference in road impact fees and et cetera, et cetera. So, but still, when you're taking it out of that fund, now you leave, if you leave the police budget at still $21 million, you've gained a million dollars more ability to do other things with. So by taking this out of the impact plan this year, you've actually gained a million, $828,000, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we've essentially freed up the funds to be able to do things.
Do it now, take it out of impact fees, but so if you keep, technically, if you wanted to just do a wash from once last year to this year, it should be instead of 21 million, 20 million.
Well, but the cost of things are going up, and you know, when we get to the nitty-gritty of the budget, you'll see the increase in the 9% and all the other things we're going to talk about with the inflation and different things of that. And Chief?
Right, I don't have my budget packet with me.
State your name for the record.
Chief Malley Bevan, Bradenton Police Department. So employed for six years. I don't have my budget packet with me, but I I know we've been through quite a process here as of recent, trying to show justifications and needs. Not once. Once are off the table. It's needs and and things that we need. I think you'll all see when you look at our line item budget, everything that's being requested, our requirements to do the job we do out there. As you said, Mayor, the cost of everything's going up. Uniforms almost doubled in price, gas, equipment, radios. Our radios are in a poor state of operation. They have to be replaced. It's not a need. I'm sorry, it's not a want to have, it's a need to have for safety reasons. And so I think we did a very good job on our budget. My entire staff, we worked many hours along with city staff, and I think we've come up with a very good budget that you all will be pleased with.
Thank you.
Should I have, while you're up there, should I ask you a couple of questions about your budget? Would you like me to defer?
Well, this is, we're talking about a specific item on the agenda, if it ties with that.
If you let me finish that, I think that answers the question.
But let's stick to that agenda item.
Okay, he knows what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I think, I know we have a lot of people that have their hands in the pot, so to speak, but when it comes to public safety, it has to be priority. And I'd like to make a motion that we take advantage of the estimated cost savings and approve the budget adjustment BA 22-37.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We've had discussion. Start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 4001, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 22, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Vacation Rentals, amending Section 22-52, Subsection A, mandatory registration, amending Section 22-54, Subsection 3, certificate of registration, amending Section 22-58, Subsections A and C regarding inspections, deleting Section 22-60, Subsection D regarding emergency lighting, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Dr. St. Louis?
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, what you have before you is amendment, amendment of the vacation rental ordinance. What we did was we reviewed the ordinance again through several departments, building, planning, fire, and they took recommendations from staff on modifications to it. Namely, one was the renewals. The ordinance was worded in such a way that it could be perceived that renewals were only allowed during a certain timeframe. So say if somebody registered a vacation rental in March, based on the ordinance wording, they can only renew it through August through December. We've changed it so that it's 90 days prior to renewal or expiration, you can renew the the ordinance. Also, emergency lighting, the ordinance was, we had multiple people review it, and the emergency lighting, we had many people who had stayed in vacation rentals. None of them had this emergency lighting included in in units, and it was perceived that this might be a burden on owners, plus require an influx of building permits to come in to install hardwired emergency lighting. And that was really the crux of the modifications, those modifications that were, that you have before you.
Okay, any questions for Dr. St. Louis before we go to the public hearing? Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve Ordinance four zero zero one.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. S. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have the first reading of Ordinance four zero zero two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending the City of Bradenton Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixty-two, Article six, micro mobility system and devices, in order to clarify and correct certain provisions, including those related to dispersment of devices, locking of devices, and appeals of permit revocation, providing for codification, conflict, severability, and an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is set for August tenth.
Okay. All right, nothing else we need to do on that, Mr. Rudisso, to set the date? All right, thank you. Chief Bevan? Says Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. You ready? Otherwise known as JAG. And you're not Chief Bevan.
I am not.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Justice Assistant Grant.
Let me just state your name, just for the record.
Captain Jeremy Giddens.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any, any questions before we go to the public hearing? Hearing none. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve this middle of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three JAG grant application to the Department of Justice to purchase the items listed in the grant application.
Second. Second by Mr. Roth. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yeah.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Great job. Okay, I guess we've got it. Miss, Madam Clerk?
Next, we have the first reading of Ordinance three zero nine nine. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, vacating a portion of a fifteen-foot alley as shown on the plot of Graham subdivision, recording in Plaid Book one, page one hundred and eighty-seven of the public records of Manatee County, Florida, being located generally south of Eighth Avenue East and west of Twelfth Street East, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is also scheduled for August tenth.
Robin Samir, Planning Committee Development Director. We're recommending approval on first reading, and as the clerk indicated, scheduling public hearing and second reading for August tenth.
So we need to approve, we don't have to approve this. We just have to get it, push it forward till the second reading. So we're all set.
Okay.
So August tenth will be the second reading, and then the next. Madam Clerk?
This is the first reading of Ordinance four thousand. An ordinance to amend Ordinance two eight five two as amended by Ordinance three zero two nine by the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, to contract the boundaries of the villages of Glen Creek Community, excuse me, Development District pursuant to Chapter one hundred and ninety Florida statutes providing for severability and an effective date. And this second reading is also, and public hearing is also on August tenth.
All right, so we'll move that forward to August tenth. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, Mr. Kelly? Mayor, the matter before you is a, the setting of the tentative military and scheduled budget hearings for the upcoming twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget that is required by state statute. And if there's any questions, this is Tom Kelly, Finance Director, is before you. I think you've had this before you annually, each and every year, pretty much.
Mr. Kelly, if you could just give us a synopsis of what we're doing and what the, I guess, consequences of doing it, or maybe not consequences, but, you know, we can't raise it, but we can lower it.
That's correct.
And that's important. So if you can explain that.
Finance Director, at this point, we're going to propose the same millage that we've had for a number of years now, five point eight nine seven six. And that, you are correct that once we propose this and report it by August first, then you can only reduce it going forward.
But, and that's important to notice, that we have to do this, and, but we can lower it to whatever we want.
That's correct. Yes. And that could be a discussion for a budget workshop if you wanted to make any future changes.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion. Yes, Mr. Roth?
I, I make a motion to approve the proposed billage rate of five point eight nine seven six, and a hearing dates of nine eight twenty-two and nine twenty-one twenty-two at five oh one P M. And I do have a comment after that.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Roth, in discussion?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, since this will be the last time I do this, I kind of wanted to share with the board my theories on, on this, that I've always proposed. I've seen different people, you know, argue about the rollback rate and all that stuff. And I've always been of the, and I've also, I was on the board when we had the real estate crash of two thousand eight, nine, and for us, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, because it just never went away for us. My, my thoughts on this is that as we're, as we work hard to improve the city and the livability of the city, you know, and the lifestyle of the city, my thinking is that we're trying to, we're making things better for our community, but we're also keeping our city alive. I come from a small town in the northeast that, you know, probably would qualify as a rust belt. And so I saw what happens to a city that doesn't want to grow. If you're not growing, you're dying. So my thinking, too, has been, as I've looked at different people doing rollbacks, and then they have to, they, they do a rollback rate, and then two years later, they got to raise the rate. I've always thought to be consistent, that we just keep the, we just keep the consistent millage rate the same. And then if we do our job correctly, the properties will improve. Our valuations will improve. Now, it doesn't affect really current homeowners because, you know, it's going up a little tiny bit, and if you're, if you're homesteaded, it's only a small increase. It's capped. But the most part is when, when properties are then sold and resold and resold, the valuations go up. And my theory on it is that's, that's the city's cost of living increase. Because everything, ever since I've been on here, it's been more expensive to run a city every single year. I remember one year in the, go back to the time period of the Great Recession, I remember one year, our chemicals went up a million dollars just to treat our drinking water. Just that, just that one item went up a million dollars. So I just, I just always have felt very comfortable on keeping the millage the same. It's, it's, it's how, it's where we're going to get. The chief has just told us the cost of everything is going up. That's across the board in every department we have here. And that's why I've just always been comfortable with keeping the millage the same. It's our cost of living increase. If we do our job correctly. If we don't do our job correctly, we'll be in a recession.
Any other comments? Mr. Sanders?
Tom, the. Adlorm tax that you have that I saw in the budget, twenty-nine million. Last year, it was twenty-four million?
It was twenty-four nine eighty-seven.
Twenty-five million. So it's about four million increase, about, what, eighteen percent?
Well, the valuations have gone up.
No, no, I'm not talking about the millage. I'm talking about the, the increase in revenue from Adlorm is about eighteen percent more.
Yeah, property tax.
Property.
Right.
So that affect, yeah, it doesn't affect homeowners with a homestead because they're capped. It does affect businesses because they're not capped, and it affects new, new purchases, you know. And so I have, you know, we don't have to do it today. You say we can do it in a workshop, but I don't, you know, the county reduced theirs last year. And what is the rollback rate? About two, point, point two?
Point two less. I'm not sure. I don't have that number.
About, this, round number would be four instead of five point eight, right?
Yeah, I think it is around five point four, if I'm remembering correctly. It's not in the fours, no.
It's not in the fours?
No.
We can lower it as low as we want, though, right?
Five point two one seven nine. Yeah, you're not.
I think the county lowered theirs point two, right?
Rollback rate. Correct.
So, I mean, with inflation at nine percent and to throw eighteen percent on top of, of businesses, is not probably quite fair. So I would not be in favor of, I'd be in favor of rolling it back.
And I think that's the opportunity. Obviously, there's deadlines with the state we have to do, but.
Right.
The opportunity is we can, we can go lower than the rollback if we want.
Right.
So we have opportunity to discuss that. And that's something that I know Mr. Perry and I've had long discussions on, you know, a lot of things within the budget and, and, you know, that's what we're going to be, we got a great time, a week from today, to be able to discuss that.
Correct.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, well, I really appreciate what Mr. Roth said as far as, you know, the cost of business going up. But I think because having lived through that bubble crash, there may, those days may come again. I don't foresee them now, but in that point, I think we do have to ask our citizens, hey, we're going to need you to pony up on this. But that's why when we've had these good years, kind of agree with Councilman Sanders. I think if we can do it, I think we go lean and mean and give them, give them a break. Because, you know, we don't know what's ahead, so.
Ms. Coachman?
I'm just saying, I'm looking forward to the workshop.
Yeah.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, sir, I know that we have budget workshop scheduled, and I'm looking forward to seeing what's included in the budget, what opportunities we may have. I think we'll come out at those workshops.
Thank you.
One other point?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sanders?
One other point. I've, I've looked at the budget, and it's the biggest budget we've ever had. Is that right, Tom?
It's, yes, there's, you know.
But what, what is the, do you have the, I mean, I know it's fluid, but what is the total budget going to be next year?
Mr. Sanders, I think it'd be unfair.
Well, I just think, you know, if we know it, I mean, I've looked at it.
Nothing is set.
Right.
Nothing is set, but it's, your proposed budget that you sent to me, what's the number?
Well, Lance is informing me, one fifty-one is the number.
One fifty-one, largest budget we've ever had. So.
It's not approved, or it's not.
I, I understand. We're not approving it today.
At this point, it's just a working document.
It's a working document. I got it. But it's the largest budget we ever had. And I think that, you know, if we keep the millage rate at this high, we're more inclined, if you give mama more money, she'll spend it, so.
And we're going to have that opportunity next week to start that down and dirty discussion. So, all right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the tentative military at five point eight nine seven six. We'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yeah.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
Approved. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Next.
I have another matter.
Okay, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. I have actually a couple of matters.
Mayor, Council, as you're familiar with the retail garage space that the city has at our parking garage downtown, I was approached by one of the tenants that has been, that is working with the city as a partner, Reverend Golden, as it relates to the ice cream store that Millie's Sweet Treats will be occupying. And it dealt with signage, basically, and a request to put a sign on the top fascia above the Millie's Sweet Street, Sweet Treats space. And it's an issue that I thought was probably important to counsel, that I didn't want to take administrative action on. Reverend and I spoke about it. I think he agreed that it would probably be best to come to counsel. And there, I'll let him speak for himself, but as you know, there was a lease that was put into place, and in that lease, there's provisions that provide for the types of signage that is permitted. There's been an application for a signed permit through the planning department, and the planning department, as they do with all signed permits, require a authorization of ownership or leasehold interest for that. And so at that point, it was, the, the application was denied for us being the landlord, and no express authorization to put any type of excess sign other than what's permitted in the lease in place. And so that was the basis, I think. And Robin's nodding her head, so I think I'm fairly accurate in that assessment as it relates to planning's work on it. City attorney was involved in drafting that lease with the input of council, and Reverend Golden is here to address a request, I believe.
Reverend Golden? I was looking forward to your lovely wife being here also.
Good morning. My wife has COVID.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the only reason I'm here. For the most part.
Please state your name and address.
Reverend James T. Golden. Live at forty-eight fifteen Eleventh Avenue Circle East here in Bradenton, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm simply asking that the city council assist its staff and its director. Apparently, we're moving in separate positions to try to get to the same thing, and that's the best outcome. We have a sign that we had at a previous location before moving into the downtown area, about four thousand dollars. And you have a letter right now that shows you the size of that sign, and it shows you what we're trying to accomplish. The issue is not for me to ask you to decide something for everybody. The issue specifically and particularly for Millie's Sweets and Treats is whether this particular sign is so egregiously outside of the scope of what you would like to see there, that as the owner, you can simply say no, because that is a part of our contractual agreement. But there's a deeper, more significant aspect to this, and that is, not only do you own the building, but you're in charge of the statutes applied to the signs. And at this point in time, unless I'm mistaken, nobody has said that what we are trying to do violates the sign ordinance. Indeed, the letter that you received from the city manager says that all we want to do is to have the council make a decision as opposed to the administrator doing it at the administrative level. So I don't, I don't think that the fact that it has not been approved by the staff is indicative of anything other than the fact that the owner of the property, with you being the council, have not said that we could do what is written in the lease. The lease says that if we want to do anything more than what is already set forth there, we do have to ask and we do have to receive the owner's permission. So let me be very clear. I'm here today to ask your permission to do this one sign. I'm not here making a representation about the sign ordinance. I'm not here trying to get you to give me an exception to the rules. I'm simply asking you, as the owner, in contractual relationships with Millie's Sweets and Treats, to allow this sign to be placed. And I know all of you, I don't know, I hope all of you've had an opportunity to see the letter and to see the sign that we are asking. I try to be candid in all of my dealings. Before coming here today, I reached out to a former city employee and asked, what do you think? What, 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 what am I, what am I asking for? And quite candidly, I was told, Reverend, I would be reluctant to do this. So I want to be very clear. I would be reluctant to do this because if you let this sign go up, you're going to have to deal with the possibility in the future of other people wanting to do this. you're gonna have to deal with the possibility in the future of other people wanting to do the same thing. You're gonna have to deal with someone else standing in this place, asking you if they can put their sign up. And I say that's a bridge that you cross when you get to it. Because there's no guarantee that anybody else is gonna ask you to allow them to put up a sign that they paid four thousand dollars for a few years ago. And that if you say no, that's four thousand dollars that we could just kiss goodbye. And by the way, Mrs. Golden said to please say thank you for even allowing us to be one of the five retail spaces down here in the garage. She is excited about making the history that we are going to make with or without the sign. But hopefully, we will be able to get the owners to cooperate with us as a small business trying to bring value to, to what's happening downtown. Unless someone comes from the staff and says to you, this violates the sign ordinance, I'm gonna ask you to exercise your discretion to allow it, even though it be reluctantly. That's all I've got. I'll be able to answer any questions out of it.
No. Mr. Perry, the lease, what did the lease say about the sign? I mean, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I remember it specifically said something about the sign.
The sign provides the occupants and tenants to have a blade sign that would hang from above their location as well as display signage in their window and their frontage area. If I could, I may approach and maybe put this up.
While you're approaching, Mr. Perry, I just want, I have one question for Reverend Golden. And, and again, there was two of us sitting up here going through the first part of it, that with the look and all the design of what we thought that garage should look like. And that was a big discussion going forward that we had then. But do you feel that by not having this sign, it will change the success of your business?
I very much think so. Because when you go up and down first, Old Main Street, the Kangaroo Pub, place where I take breakfast all the time. The, the, the signs are all down, up and, up and down that street. What we're trying to do is to create a signature destination that people will know. We wanna use the sign in marketing. We want to use the sign to ad, to advertise not only for our building, which is the one, our, our space, which is the one on the end, but it also attracts to the other tenants who are already there. This, for us, it's a significant marketing mechanism. It says ice cream. And it, it, it is, it's just too much of an investment to, to, to lay on the floor in the garage or to, to throw away. We don't intend on being there three years. Millie's Sweets and Treats will be there thirty years. And what we're wanting to be is a part of the success of downtown. And we're, and that's why I said, I'm not trying to get you to change your ordinance. That's not, that's not what I wanna do. I don't want an exception or whatever it is. I can't remember what we call it nowadays. I'm simply saying that as the owner of the building, we're asking you to take advantage of that part of the contract that nobody seems to wanna read or tell you. It says, if you want something more, you have to have permission from the owner in writing. Now, if that has no meaning, or if that has no efficacy, then I'm standing up here in vain. Because you do not have any discretion and we do not have any contractual relationship. And even if it is an exception to the sign ordinance, I'm not asking for that exception.
But you say that, but, you know, we're listening now, so we do care. This group cares. And you sit on a dice just like this, and you know how people, you listen, and then you make a decision one way or the other, and people live with it. So, let's look at what Mr. Perry has to show, and then we can do it.
Not only do I sit on a dice just like this, I sit on this dice for eight years. And I can assure you that we've had many of these kinds of decisions that have come, come forth.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Thank you. I'm gonna put a couple of photographs up on the overhead. And as you can see from this photograph, the fascia, what I'm referring to, sits above the first story and below the second story. That is architectural design as it's obvious from it and the like. The space to the left is the space we're referring to. The sign's dimensions as proposed were approximately a hundred and sixty inches by twenty-one inches tall. I think that's about thirteen feet or so. I have to do the amount, a hundred and forty-four is twelve times twelve, and so, yeah, it's thirteen feet and a few inches. Now, so you see what's there, and, and you're gonna put this up, which was the, Reverend Golden did exactly what he's supposed to do. He went to a sign contractor, and the sign contractor laid out a design format that's going to the planning department for sign review. Now, this, the, the planning department hasn't fully completed the review. They stopped when they didn't have permission from the landowner. But generally speaking, I think if you take that top fascia, there is space. Now, I don't know if you rent that top fascia. That would be an interesting question. When you lease the unit, do you lease that part of the unit as well? It's obviously excluded as it relates to the signage. But you can see the sign, ice cream, and, and the dimensions that are contained in it. Above it, you can see to a certain extent, conceptually, how it fits onto that fascia and the other, other rental units along the retail space as well as above it. And ultimately, to the lower right, a photograph of the sign itself. Now, if this sign was to go in, I think you'd probably have to ask Mr. Rudisell if the other tenants would have a right to put their sign for beach shop, women's apparel, whatever else might come. That's not clearly what Reverend Golden's asking for today. But I think to not consider that is probably not full thoughtfulness because it, it probably, in my opinion, would open up a certain degree. It, it's before you, and, and I think if it was on nimm t' yav, if it was in, on nimm t' yav, it probably would be permissible within the space and the confines. Don't know if you want that. That's what the question comes down to. Your all's policy decision, not ours. Reverend's got a good request here before you, and I think it has to be decided by.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, Mr. Perry, specifically going back to the lease, the lease specifically stated signage. I mean, it, it says, yeah, you can do whatever you want, but it said where, what kind of sign goes with the property.
Right.
And, and a lease, and, and a lease is a legal binding contract. So, so just reminding everyone how we got here. When this started, when we went to fill these spots, we decided to go with a realtor. And one of the reasons we did was so that, well, we, we recognize the realtor's expertise, but we also said, we wanna take us, the politicians, out of this building. We do not wanna be making political decisions on a DS about this building. Coming up with favoritism and such would, would come. So, we took ourselves out of the equation purposely. And that's, that's why I went with it. I wasn't really pro, I, I thought that we could probably have city staff handle the arrangements for leasing and, and, you know, contracts, that kind of stuff. But we made a board decision, and my vote was for taking us out of the equation. And my vote was for to hand it over to administration, which is where I'm going. Now, now, I was contacted by Mr. Golden, and I'm open-minded, always happy to the business. But when I, when I see this here, I'm looking at, I didn't envision stuff going up on that wall there. Obviously, you're gonna be punching a hole in the building. Is there gonna be electric? Well, now you gotta run wiring in there. What are we gonna? So, we're, we're taking, now, so let's go back to the building.
It's illuminated.
So, when I go back to how, how, why that building is there? Well, we discussed earlier, we needed parking. We needed parking before. We, because of the hotel, we needed more parking. And we started off with, well, what's, what's a parking garage gonna cost us? I remember it was ten million. A concrete parking garage with no paint, just stalls is ten million. The super deluxe model that we all wanted cost sixteen million. We weren't willing to spend that. So, I remember going back and forth to Folly Bryant, probably a dozen times, to try to get that down to, to get it down to. And we got, we basically got it in the middle of the road. We, and, and in my opinion, we got the quality product. We tried to get the sixteen million dollar product for about thirteen million, is, is, is how I remember that. So, anyway, so, so that's what we tried to do, and the whole deal was to make it a beautiful building that we'd all be proud of.
And I think that's what we got.
And that's what I got.
Because there's certain people in this town still don't even know where it is, because they don't think it's a parking garage.
So, and, so, so what I, you know, so I just see that this is, and, and, and Reverend Golden actually said this himself. Beware of the unintended consequence. Anytime you're up here, remember that, because you'll always regret it. I can't tell you how many times we've opened a door, and it's like, God, that door's open, and, and someone else will come through. So, I, I, I understand Reverend Golden's request. I, I certainly was open to it. But, you know, the fact that we have a contract and, and, and really, we made a decision before to hand this over to staff so that we won't be sitting in a situation where we're standing here as a politician, talking to another politician that I used to work with, about a sign for his shop. I, I, I'm not comfortable being here. So, I'm, I'm not gonna support this. I'm sorry.
That's fine, Mr. Roth, but you need to understand.
Let me, let me get to the rest of the council first. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I, I, you know, while I'm so excited and want you to be very successful, I have to agree with Councilman Roth. And actually, it's a great-looking sign. I'd hate to see, like you said, just throw it away. I'd install it inside so that when you have the, everything open, you'd still be able to see it. But I just feel like it's not congruent with what we're doing downtown with all the twinkle lights. I don't think we have any other illuminated signs on Man, on Old Main Street. So, I think unintended consequence, if we let you do it, we need to let somebody else do it. And you, as, and like he said, you're a politician, we're politicians, and we'd be giving you favoritism. And I, I don't think we wanna have that. And we did vote to give it to a real estate professional for that reason.
Your Honor? Can you, let me get any other comments?
I'll make a comment.
Mr. Sanders?
Uh, I didn't know it was gonna have Ice Cream Gate. I like it. I could live with it either way. I mean, I think we do open the door for their others to, to put up a sign. You're gonna have, in my opinion, I like equality. So, if you got a sign, I want a sign, if they want it. But, I mean, we, we probably can't go crazy with it. Personally, I don't think it looks that bad, so I'd vote for it.
All right, Mrs. Barnaby? Any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I was not on the council when the council undertook this project, I do remember numerous discussions since I got on the council about leasing the spaces and wanting to set a certain standard with the project. It was evident to me when, when I saw what was being built there and then came down and saw the finished product that the council has spent a great deal of time on design and aesthetics and trying to come up with something that would be pleasing as well as would be an addition to downtown and possibly encourage those business owners that have older properties to put some money into them and try to, to lift them up. I, I feel for Reverend Golden that he has this sign that he has purchased, that he feels that it would not be worthy of him keeping. I, I like Mrs. Coker's idea of putting it on the inside of, of the property that Millie's Sweet Shop will be in. I remember just within the last six months, we had a situation where someone went in front of the planning commission because they had purchased a sign, and it was not according to our code at all. And the planning commission felt sorry for them and agreed that it could go up, even though it was not allowed by our code. And I don't think the planning commission realized that they were the final word on that topic, on that, on that particular subject. I think they thought they were gonna kick it up to us and have us be the bad guys and say no, but they were the deciding, they, they were the court of last resort in that situation. I do believe that if we allow Reverend Golden to put this kind of signage up, that every other tenant has the right to come and ask us to allow them to do whatever they would like to do. And I don't think that that's what the council who voted to put this project on Main Street intended to have happen. So, I'm afraid I can't support the reverend's request either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment for, Mr. Golden, or Reverend Golden? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. First, I wanna be absolutely clear. I'm not before you today as a politician, talking to other politicians. This is my wife, and I'm here because this is my wife. That's all. Secondly, even though it may be a difficult decision to make because of unintended consequences, what I'm really hearing you say is that the decision that you made some time ago is the decision that you're gonna stick with. The reason I'm here is because the realtor that you all said that you relied on said I could rely on that provision in our contract that says I can come and make this petition. Not because I just decided to do it, but that was what he recommended. And your administrator has chosen not, in the writing that he gave you, has chosen not to make a decision. And so, I have to really ask myself, if in fact, he had said, okay, Reverend, where will we be now? Because if he had said that, as is within his, within his authority, then you would be at odds with your administrator. Instead, he chose not to make a decision, which requires me to come and ask you to make one. And I'm not asking you to make it lightly, but I'm also not asking you to make it on behalf of people who do not have the specific factual circumstance that I have. There is nobody in there right now that can come before you and ask you to allow this sign that was at a previous location out of the city to be erected. And unless they have the exact same specific factual basis. This is the trouble you have when you get three lawyers, Rudisell and Perry and Golden. I'm also an attorney too. And so, what I'm really dealing with is, where would we be if any step along the way? I didn't hear that.
That's law firm?
That's what I, Rudisell, Perry and Golden. No, no, no. I, I understand the dilemma that you're in. But I'm gonna ask the three people who have expressed reservations about supporting it to reconsider. Even though there's a possibility, even though there's a possibility of unintended consequences, the problem that I have is that everybody's already in there. They're already there. And in fact, we are held up in part because this process, aside from the fact that my wife is sick, we're held up because we are still trying to, to be a part of the progress that is happening in this city. So, I don't, I don't want you to think that I'm trying to turn this into a legal.
At this point, Mr. Roth, the chair will entertain a motion.
What?
And I think then we can get into.
Can I make a motion? Well, I, I actually, I have a, so, Mr. Golden, you actually pointed out a flaw to what I thought we've already dealt with. So, regardless of how we go here, I, I plan on making a motion that, cause I, when we decided to go with a realtor, we decided for specific reasons to take ourselves out of this loop of, of who goes into those leases and what, and what kind of relationship, and any kind of complaint that comes up down the road. Because remember, these leases are now gonna be opened by, by shop owners, and they're gonna come in there and they're gonna say, well, I didn't get, I want this, I want, you know, or this broke, or, or, oh, hey, I didn't know I wanted that. There's more to come. There's more to come. So, I'm gonna make a motion that I thought we did when we signed on with having a realtor handle this and it go to administration. I'm gonna make a motion that the, regardless of what we do with the sign, that the city administrator is the administrator is the agent to the Realtor agent, that all decisions will be made by the Realtor and the city administrator, so in all future conflicts that comes forward.
Let's, let's, we can bring that up later, but let's stick with kind of what I agree with.
Well, that is, that is this, that is this.
But we're talking about a sign right now.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about, I think, a flaw that we, that we, that we created by, by.
Let's see if Mr. Perry. And I appreciate what Councilman Roth is speaking about. I think pretty much any, any sign, decisions made administratively, whether it's through planning or planning and the city administrator, can always be appealed to council, generally speaking.
Well, and that's, and, and.
And that's kind of what's going on. You're all familiar with the appeals that you get here for land use all the time. That's the purpose, basically. Don't, I, I think a motion that would restrict that ability to take it to council, and I can understand why council would want it at the administrative level. It was a valid and proper reason to try to take council out of it, but at the end of the day, the governing body is responsible. And I think it probably went as far as my legal expertise takes me and Mr. Rude Sill, who's more intimately familiar with those things, use rights to appeal should probably address that question. And I appreciate what you're saying.
Well, wait, so what, so, so, so just, because what I was trying to do is, so what, what happens what, down the road, let's say there's an electrical problem, someone needs, and, and they can't, and they figure that it's not being covered. I'm just, I'm just throwing something off the wall. And, and a tenant wants to have an issue coming up and they don't like what they're hearing from staff, so they're going to come in here and ask us for that, for rewiring, and then, and then down the road, it's going to be, I don't, I don't know what it can be. I, I thought we went, y'all remember, I was not in favor of going, I thought we'd just handle it ourselves. I didn't think we needed a Realtor, but I went with the board for this reason, and this was the main reason I did this, so we weren't standing here in this position. Now, if, if I'm being told that's not what I did back then, I know what I, I know what I intended, I know what I thought, we handed it there, so, I mean, I'm trying to correct it. Look, I've got five and a half months. This is your problem I'm trying to fix, you know? You know, this is, there's more to come. I've been here.
I was just going to say, I, I think we already have the situation that, that Councilman Roth is talking about, where the administration has the ability to make a decision. They did make a decision here. What you're essentially hearing is an appeal, no different than, you know, when somebody has an issue with their garbage and they may want to come to public comment and make a comment to the council. I mean, I think residents always have that ability to seek ultimately redress at the council level, but I do think that that authority was given to the administration here and they exercised it.
Do you have a question about that?
Ms. Coker had a hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, while I don't know if going as far as saying absolutely no, you can't appeal to, to us, I think that we're hearing most people, I mean, we don't want to be involved in this, so if staff doesn't like it, we don't like it, unless there's some overriding reason. And that's what I would say.
Mr. Sanders?
Something Mr. Rude Sill just said caught my attention. You said any citizen could come in here and ask for an appeal or get their three minutes or whatever, and we're being prevented from addressing people that come in here by not being able to respond back to them, and I have a real big problem with that. And you just said that they could. So, I, I'm, I'd like for you to pine on that and list it a little bit more, because if I got a neighbor that wants to do something and he comes in, or she, and says, I want this done, you're saying, the mayor's saying, I can't rebut to him or her, but now you just said that he has an opportunity to. What's the difference?
Hold on, Reverend Golden, hold on.
Should, should we conclude Reverend Golden's matter and then?
Okay, but wait a minute, this is a bigger, you just opened the door. Yeah.
I'm happy to address Mr. Sanders' issue, but I would just recommend.
Okay, well, you save it for later, that's fine. We'll, we'll bring it up in council comments.
All right. Mrs. Coachman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you can't necessarily turn off your politician ears, but if you had them on, I, I don't know where this motion will go, but just so we can just move along, move to consider the sign.
You move?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilman Sanders. So, we've had plenty of discussion and so we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
So, I will have no more opportunity to respond.
Yes.
Okay, but before we start the vote, Ms. Sanders, I'm giving one chance to.
Okay.
I appreciate that, because I specifically said when I came up here, that I was not trying to avail myself of the appeals process that arises as a consequence of a decision made by the department. You yourself are now acknowledging that this is a decision that could have been made by the administrator. That's what you're saying. And the reality is, if that was the case, I would not have embarrassed myself by coming here, trying to appeal a decision that has been made, that's made. But the letter that you have specifically says, he was not willing to make a decision, so it's wrong to characterize his letter as implying that a decision has been made. On the other hand, if you have decided that my concerns as your tenant and your concerns as the owner of the building are so far apart that you cannot approve this sign for this purpose at this time, so be it. But I don't want this to go down in the record as if I'm appealing a decision. No decision was made. That's why I'm here. What I was told was, now what you do after this and how you correct this, that's fine. I'm just sorry that we are caught up in the middle of it, but I wouldn't be much of a husband or much of a man if I didn't come down here.
Reverend, I agree with you. And when I first got that email from Mr. Perry, I said, wait a minute. I was, I was a little mad about it. I said, wait a minute, you're shifting that over to me? And we, like Mr. Roth said, we shifted that to him to make that decision and the other Realtor. They decided not to do it, so now you, you, you got it back to me, that's the reason I called it ice cream gate. I, I, that was not, that was not the intent by what Mr. Roth said, but that's what happened. So, lo and behold, it's here now. I've seconded it. That's my.
So, we're going to go for, and I'm going to make one comment, is, is the planning department denied it, basically, Mr. Perry, and we took it out. We took it out of the politics and unfortunately, you're the politician that's coming to us and saying some of it, so we can, we can do semantics on some things, but we're going to start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
No.
Two?
No.
Three?
No.
So, fails three to two. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Or no, I'm sorry, Mr. Perry, did you have one other item?
Yes, I want to bring the attention to council. As it relates to the timing of our considered disposition for City Hall that is on the street that, that council is aware of, the timing initially had responses due back August fifteenth. If you remember, the requirement through the CRA statute was if a property is within a CRA, it has to be advertised, and so it was required to be, to be done that way. And there was a minimum time period of thirty days. I think we provided ninety, basically, on the street from initial approval by council to do such. We're at a point now, moving forward, where, where we've had, I, I, I think it's twenty-six hundred views.
Thousands.
Thousands, I'm sorry, twenty-six thousand views and a lot of downloads, and, and we will probably be getting in some proposals and that will come before me. And I'm going to need some direction on how, basically, to handle those proposals before I take them to council, basically, and, and the methodology of that. It's somewhat uncharted grounds. The city hasn't done anything like this in a long time, but there is some guidance out there. Where I'm going is that I would think that at this point in speaking with several people, that it might be advisable to extend the opportunity to, to proposers an additional sixty days, basically, to respond from August fifteenth on to the fifteenth of October. As it relates to one particular councilor, there was notification that they were going to be opened here at, as a bid response, basically, on City Hall on August seventeenth, and I think there was a conflict with that date as well. That was in the considered disposition, so it wasn't something that I just came up with. It was, everyone should have known about it for ninety days, basically, at least a minimum. So, I, and I, I think it would provide a great deal more time. I also think that it would help, because we have received a lot of inquiries that we've been somewhat restrictive in responding to as it relates to, well, what does the city want to build there? And I don't think we want to give specific direction in that regard. We want to see what the developer would propose. The REC report that came out today shows certain benefits of building one thing opposed to another and the like, and so we'd like to supplement on our DemandStar and our platform that we've distributed that to nationwide. I think it would help the developers consider what the right proposition would be to maximize economic benefit. In doing that, I would request, you know, I, I'm not really requesting additional time. I'm just trying to see if, if there's great objection to it.
One quick comment also, do you think that with the way the commodity market and things are, is coming actually down now? I mean, are we seeing that? And I mean, we might have to get some more information.
Well, we are. You know, that's, obviously, when you talk about building materials and supplies as well as associated labor cost and inflationary rates at nine point one percent, you know, year over year and the like, it, it's interesting. We are attempting to slow down the economy. If the Fed is successful at doing that, which they probably will be, we'll be backing down a little bit of the development permits that come in and the associated development related thereto, and ultimately bringing down material costs. I think it will give those people the opportunity to sharpen their pencil, the developers and proposers, and to maybe have a better handle on what their ultimate cost would be when they have to run pro forma calculations.
Maximize the purchase price of this property.
And ultimately maximize the purchase price. Yes, sir.
So, I, I guess I need clarification. Are, are you saying, so right off the bat, we got twenty-six thousand views?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty impressive.
Yes, sir.
So, you're saying that the, the August fifteen due date is for them to get us information or for us to respond back to them?
No, it's for, it's for us, for them to give us information.
So, we're giving them an extra?
Sixty days.
Why are we doing that when we have twenty-six thousand?
Because I think the, the dynamics of a project like this are fairly complex and obviously it's a significant amount, and it gives the opportunity to them to estimate some of their costs, provide better proposals, maybe feel a little bit more comfortable that they've vetted adequately and the like. And, and quite frankly, one of the bigger issues with the sale of City Hall isn't the sale of City Hall or the price of the sale of City Hall, it's how we get out of City Hall. Because the buyer of City Hall is going to go, okay, well, if you agree with my proposal and you agree with my price, when are you leaving? I need to, I need to develop and it can't be four years from now. And so, we, we're working on that, and, and I know as you mentioned earlier, that as well, and I think that's an important thing to kind of hammer out, and so we can be doing some of that in the meantime, looking at proposals.
Well, so, so here's what, I mean, I'm, I'm just going to go back to the twenty-six thousand, and I knew when we put this property for sale, it was going to be a hot item because there just aren't properties like this. I've been all over Florida. I mean, this is pretty rare, what we've got going here. So, I'm just wondering why we're stretching it out, because I would rather have twenty-five really motivated buyers than a thousand tire kickers, all right? And that's what I'm worried about, we're doing is by stretching us out, we're just inviting tower. I, I don't see why when we've got that kind of, that kind of action that we're.
How many responses have we got back yet?
None, and, and that's, that's fairly typical, though, I think.
They're going to, they're going to come in at the, they're going to come in at the due date.
Yes, sir, that's, that's what I think. And, and I'm not saying necessarily the entire sixty days, it might be thirty, and, and I can appreciate what you're saying.
But that's a might be? I mean, are we voting on a might be or are we voting?
Well, we're not really voting on anything. I haven't asked for any, any vote, and if you'd like to make a motion, I mean, obviously, that's within your purview and the like. I can go either way. I'm just telling you, basically, where we're at, some of the feedback and the like, and, and you don't even have to take a motion if we can come up with some informal direction. I don't want to be doing it myself. That's it. You guys make policy and I want you to, you know, be aware of what's going on.
I guess I'd like to wait and see as we get closer, what kind of action we have, and then maybe stretch it out, but I, I don't. What would we do if we got twenty-six thousand offers?
We're not going to.
No, I mean, what, what would we do?
Ms. Coker?
Okay, well, first off, I thought it was a pretty short time period from the get-go because my expectations are pretty high of what I want to see from these submittals. I want to see drawings, I want, I don't want to see boilerplate, I want to see thinking outside the box. And ninety days to have drawings and creativeness and looking at market stuff, I just think that's pretty quick. Now, and I also feel like, let's not wait. I don't think it's fair to the people that have maybe been breaking their backs to try and meet that deadline to all of a sudden then move the goalpost. I, I think we move it now, but with the understanding that, hey, our expectations are high here. We want to see some quality, you know, and, and may, we're not going to see twenty-six thousand. There just aren't that many, but I think we'll see, because I just, I just think it'll be a little bit more evident than that. And I'd like to see us get better quality in two months later than rushed stuff on time.
And I think that one of the things that, thinking of it quickly here, and I agree with both of you from the standpoint of, I don't want to move the goalpost.
Mm-hmm.
But I'd also think that our market conditions are changing so much right now because of the, the supply chain and things might be able, they might be able to sharpen their pencil. Now, if we were talking six months, but if we're talking thirty or sixty days, I think there's an opportunity to succeed more because I, I don't like saying that, and, and again, I wasn't foregoing the ninety days at the beginning, but I think there's an opportunity now to enhance what it is, and then, I don't know. I mean, obviously, all I've seen is the twenty-six thousand and the zero, you know, and I don't, and maybe that's the way it works, because they're waiting to see, and you know, you want to get your, nobody else sees the other person's proposal, so we're hoping we get them in. So, I don't know.
Well, if I could.
Mrs. Barnaby? Any comment?
I have one.
All right, Mr. Sanders, and then Ms. Barnaby, if you do, we'll come back to you.
And I had another follow-up.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you, Ms. Coker?
Okay, I just had one more thing. And, and I think a lot of these players that are coming from outside, you know, the general jurisdiction, I mean, they've got to still, I mean, there are certain things that they got to learn about our market and all that. I think it takes time, and I think they think more globally. I, I think they're used to dealing with markets that are changing and, and all the things that we're talking about. So, I, I don't know, I stand by what I said.
Okay, Mr. Sanders?
Well, we went from sixty days, which I didn't agree with, and to ninety days, which I still didn't agree with. I thought it might be a little bit longer, but I don't understand now we're going back the opposite direction. But we don't have, if we open them on the sixteenth, seventeenth, I mean, that, that's kind of odd that we, you have to be in stone on the sixteenth or seventeenth because I'm out of town. But we, but, but we can just extend this off the cuff without telling those twenty-six, how are you going to tell the twenty-six thousand people you've got sixty more days?
Publication.
Publication, you think they're all going to read that? Maybe, maybe not. I, I think that you buy a.
May I answer the question? I think, I think people that are in the business that do estimating and proposals, I think that's the first thing they're going to read.
Okay.
How much time do we have? When is it due? Put it on the top of the don't mess it up pile.
Well, that's.
Make sure it's in on time.
It could be, but also if you open it, you don't have to accept it. We didn't, we didn't, we always knew that we could open it. We might, what if we got zero? What if we just got one that we already have or two we already have? We can always say no.
But if it comes in.
And, and say, we'll put it right back out there for sixty more days. It's not good enough. We're not going to sell it for that.
Two, two facts, that August fifteenth was the date, we talked about the day of the meeting. And then August seventeenth was talked about that, because it's not a city council meeting. We were going to, we're, city council will be sitting in the audience watching, I assumed, the opening of, by the committee that's appointed to do that.
Actually, Tammy Spearman from procurement will pull them out of her vault, walk them down here and open it up and probably advise us how many the numbers are and further information. We won't be going over them, we won't be reviewing them, we won't be telling you how much they offered or anything else at that point.
That's just saying, here's who's in, and, because none of that is public record as of that moment.
Right, and that's the way to do it. There's a sequence to it, to adhere to, you know, reasonable procurement process.
Seriously, you, you won't open them and say what the bids are?
You didn't think that, well, no.
Why?
Because that's not the process. When we get a bid for chemicals or anything else, you, I, I, hold on, thank you, Tammy. No, we, we don't do that. We don't go, okay, well, chemical company A did forty thousand dollars per lot and this one, that one. There's an assembly of a committee and, and a selection committee, a recommendation
There's an assembly of a committee and, and a selection committee, a recommendation committee, that basically vets it pursuant to the criteria of what was proposed. And ultimately, it goes to council for approval. Now, I'm gonna need direction from council as far as, there's three components that I think that you're all gonna be keying on, which is basically, what is the proposed use? So, what do you plan on building? Ultimately, how much? But that might even be second to, what are, what are they proposing as far as giving us time to get out of this building? Because you can't sell, you know, you can't sell one till you buy it something else or find something else. That's, if we didn't have the City Hall problem of having to move an entire police department and entire administrative function, it would be different. But it is a little bit complex. There is some, you know, moving parts to it and the like. And I think that time helps us kind of work through those issues.
And, but I think we, we need to make the statement, so as, as these developers out there are watching and will see this, there is, our administration is working with options to move part City Hall and the police department. Obviously, we're gonna have to build some things, but there is options being worked right now. If, if they say we gotta be out of this building, they would like us out of this half in six months. There's options to do things.
We're assembling a team to look at short-term.
Short-term rentals, leases, different things, options for us to utilize. So, it's not just saying, oh, now we've got this bid, now you gotta wait three years.
Right.
Administratively, is working through options of other things to get, right? So, that's, again, it's not just, I, I'm gonna say this, and, and I was very disappointed as a councilman and as mayor how long it took us to rent five rental spaces. We've got to have a better plan. And that plan is being, you know, processed right now to get through so we can turn over maybe parts of it, all of it, you know? And again, that's gonna have to...
That's a possibility.
That's gonna have to be worked out, right? The phasing of it, so, you know, and again, that's what we hired you to do. And that's what it did. Uh, Mr. Sanders, did you have anything?
Yeah, I have some more, yes. Um, so, I didn't understand that we won't, we'll open the bids. Well, what's the purpose of opening the bids if we don't know what they are?
Because they have to be basically all, all opened up at some point.
Opened up and, we're gonna, what we're gonna say, okay, I opened this envelope?
Then they'll go through the procurement.
And then there's, you're not gonna say anything? And we just open, we have, we have ten envelopes.
We'll tell you probably things like the, the, the...
And we're not gonna say anything?
The numbers we've received and, and other limited information, just like we would on any bid. You, you, you're very experienced, you've worked through the procurement process, you've seen how these things go. Whether it's, we're selling at City Hall or we're selling anything else that's surplus, I mean, that's generally how it works. You don't, you don't just open them up and roll them out right there.
Why not?
I've never seen that. Well, a lot of times that there's legal requirements that are attendant to it.
Well, what legal requirements are there not to tell the public what you got your bids for? I thought that's what our intent was the whole time.
They will be re, reviewed and released. You have thirty days to work with it under the Inspection of Public Records Act. They're not even discoverable. And I would imagine the Florida legislature probably provided that so that people like Tammy, when they do procurement, have adequate time. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. That's news to me, but anyway, um, you sent a document, I think by mistake, to us last Thursday? Uh, and it had an attachment, you did, you did?
I, I, I have no idea what you're referring to.
You, you had an attachment, and then I think it's on page nine. You, uh, so, this was a, a new document that, that has a lot of details that we're know today that had to be recently done. It says, we're gonna purchase the Bradenton Herald Building. And it says that we're going to, uh, about three point four million and we're model another four million. And we're going to, um, it says, bridge from five hundred spaces, fifteen million, scene parking garage, event deck, sell three point six acres of water, City Hall, waterfront City Hall, luxury development, many St. Petersburg. And it says appraisal terms are the right of first refusal plus or minus five percent. No tax abatement.
Okay.
And limited AMTAC, limited impact fees, waivers. Why would you, it's, it looks like you've already predetermined.
Well...
I, I would like to have an explanation.
Well, Mr. Perry, hold on, uh, Mr., Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like a point of clarification because I don't, I never got a copy of that, so I'd like him to tell us where that came from.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
It's being mischaracterized and probably not intentionally.
Okay.
It was, it was the proposal that was sent to all counselors back in January is what it was.
No, no, this was hit to its last...
It was sent to you back in January.
No, that's not the same one.
The initial PowerPoint presentation.
Not the same one.
On particular...
I've got both of them, I compared them, they're not the same.
We'll argue about it.
Well, we can.
Yep.
We can, because, I mean, these, this, this presentation's got a lot more detail, lot, i- it's completely, uh, oranges and apples from your January twenty-sixth to this one. This one, I think, was work product that you didn't mean to release, but you did. And that concerns me that you've opened up this for discussion and I want to have it. I want to know why you didn't have that we're gonna have a, a, an open bidding process.
Because back in January...
This wasn't January, I got received this last Thursday.
I will promise...
And it does not line up with January.
I will promise each and every one of you that if you... We, we do an investigation, we go back to...
Well, we probably do need to do an investigation.
Just like we do on anybody's computer and see when documents were generated, put into the work system. I will stay by the microphone.
Yes, okay, please. We have, I'd like to have an investigation on that.
Do you want to talk back and forth over each other?
All right, let's, let's try to, we can, we can debate this later, but let's get to the point we're at.
No, I think we need to debate it now because this is a concern.
Right, but we can go forward on that. Mr. Roth, you have a question?
It looks, it looks, doesn't look good.
Can I, can I take a quick?
Well, we certainly are far afield.
Explanation of this, we are very far afield. But that, that was based in January. As we were putting together the capital development plan, that had, uh, uh, two, two different sections, capital projects and the, the City Hall proposal, basically. We received unsolicited offers back then. What I looked at back then was different types of way to make the first one work, which was the City Hall proposal that had the Bradenton Herald. So, it mentions the Bradenton Herald and the like, and some things that could be included in there. And basically, that was sent to you again.
But there's no, there's no bidding process in this document.
That's because we received an unsolicited offer at that time.
But we, we would put out a bidding process in April and it's not in here.
Mr. Sanders, we're gonna move on to Mr. Roth.
Okay, so, I, two, two, two points I want to make.
What?
I don't remember how many years ago, we sold the reservoir property. The city council sold the reservoir property. We took, we took bids, we got the bids, we analyzed them, and we made a decision. Um, so, we did that. I, I don't know why there, that's different than this. It's, it's the same thing. We, we sold a property we owned, we're gonna sell a property we own. Should be the same process. We, we looked at the bids, we made the decision. Secondly, um, when this came up, I mean, I questioned, uh, uh, there was a, a, a desire to move fast on this, 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 this action. And, and I said, well, you know, it seems to be coming a little quick, but certainly, I've considered it to be for sale since two thousand and six. The market's never been right. It seems to be right now. We made a decision to move forward, we're moving forward. You just tell me you got twenty-six thousand views? I mean, that's about, that's about twenty-five thousand more than I thought we'd get. So, I think we're gonna get, I, I, I don't see the sense in, in slowing this down now. A decision was made to move quickly, I'm all for it, I'm still there. And I just don't see the sense in, in, in backing this down right now. I think it's just gonna make more confusion. I think we should, you know, who's, who will respond right now are serious buyers. And, and I, I'd rather stay with serious buyers than have to try to weed out. Last thing, I, I'll give you an example. We decided to sell the reservoir property to the highest bidder. Guess what? They went bankrupt. We had to start over again. So, I, I, and, and, and we did, and the council did decide who was gonna buy that property.
But it was still went through purchasing and then came to us. There was three, there was, still the process went through. There was three people that gave us bids. We picked the highest one, a, a lot of discussion, and some council members voted against it. And then it came back and we picked the second one.
Okay, so...
It's not a showstopper. If you want to go on August fifteenth, and apparently, you're kind of suggesting that we should, and I get it, and, and you're making good arguments.
Okay.
I, I'm fine with it, quite frankly.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's just, my recommendation would be to extend it. You don't have to take my recommendation. You make colorable, good, good, supportable arguments about why move forward.
We, we like each other, but we're different.
Uh, no, absolutely, absolutely. And, and again, I mean, I think it's a better way to go, but I can go either way. Because it is on the street and we have had a lot of activity. What you pointed out is...
And, and, and the other point I wanted to make, sorry, um, the, 'cause I was watching, the Sarasota County Administrator sold their building. I, I was watching that very closely, all right? And, and it came down to, and, and everyone knew that they were still in there. The county, the big county, much bigger than our building. Um, and, and they, part of their deal was that they were going to need the building until they got another building built. And that was, that was part of the deal. And, and they baked it in there and they had plenty of people that were interested. And they all had different prices on what it was gonna cost. So, there's the purchase price and then the leaseback price. You and I've had this discussion.
Yes, sir.
So, so this is all doable. This is not uncharted territory.
Perfect. Anybody else have any comments? So, um, there is a conflict of the seventeenth that, you know, obviously, to be present at that, you know, obviously, there was some confusion on how it was gonna happen. But, but I have a conflict on the eighteenth and nineteenth, so I don't know if we get them in on the fifteenth and then move it to Monday at ten a.m.
If you're not gonna open them, it doesn't matter. You're gonna open them and reveal it to the public. If you're not gonna do that, who cares?
And then it'll come to us at a later date.
Whatever.
Sounds good.
So, that committee, that committee will be picked.
I'm out of town till the eighteenth, but I thought she was gonna open them and say, hey, A B C Company bids this.
Okay.
E X Y Z bids this.
The problem with...
I just don't understand why you do...
Stick with the schedule, I'm, I'm fine with sticking to schedule, yeah. It's not, it really isn't a showstopper, right?
Well, but, but again, the problem with, if you open up at A, B, and C and then something falls through, somebody else then comes in and wants to bid next time and they're gonna say, well, I know this fell through, I can do that. There's that thirty-day procurement that you have to get it. And then if something doesn't come through, we still have time to regroup on it at that point. If, if we get none, if we get none, then we have to regroup anyway.
Absolutely.
Right, so, I, I'm fine with the fifteenth, you know, 'cause I went back and forth on that saying, 'cause again, I didn't want that long. I thought, but when I started looking at more research on the scope of this project, this isn't selling of one piece of unencumbered land, you know? It's, it's a lot more than that. But even those days, Patrick, if you remember back, um, there were some issues with some entitlements from the county that some of them, we, I think we extended that if I'm not mistaken. I, I'll bet you if we look back, I remember now, we might have extended it because they didn't know if the county was gonna let them build three hundred homes or six hundred homes, and they had to transfer all that, that soot from the reservoir. And there was a lot, that was a moving target quite a bit.
It was a moving target to down. We, we, we told them we didn't really, that's not our problem.
Well, we had a, we had an unencumbered two million dollar offer right out of the box.
Yeah.
And that was just, that was kind of thrown at us.
Right.
But, um, so, but we ended up getting ten point five, if I remember correctly. So, anyway, all right, so we'll leave it as is?
Sounds good, leave it as is. Nothing further on new business, that should be it.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, now, I think we're back to Madam Clerk as a resolution.
Yes, this is also under Mr. Perry. A res- resolution twenty-two forty-nine, a resolution of the city of Bradenton, Florida, determining the necessity and public purpose in authorizing the acquisition of property located in Bradenton, Florida by eminent domain or through negotiation for the purpose of constructing municipal buildings and/or facilities, authorizing attorneys to initiate eminent domain proceedings to acquire the necessary property and providing an effective date.
Ms. Perry?
Mayor, Council, uh, this is a, an eminent domain proceeding that deals with the property that is potentially adjac- adjacent to the police department site. It's at Sixth and First, it's actually Second there. Uh, yeah, apparently, it's been owned by Verizon.
Bell South.
Corporation, Bell South, it was part of the divestiture. There was some contact a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was Mr. Lish or, or who it was, Mr. Callahan probably has a recollection of it, but there was some contact. And at some point, they said, well, we received this property in the divestiture of Ma Bell, the, the, the mothership of, of telecom back in the early days. And, uh, they received that through that divestiture. They hadn't done a whole lot with the property. It's pretty much been vacant since. I had heard there was some environmental phase-one remediation that might have been done to the surface of the subterranean condition that existed. I don't know the extent of it and the like. Um, we would like to acquire that property for the public purpose, basically, of having that surface area available for support of the new police station architecture and engineering design that's being done. And, uh, and in order to do that, talking with our attorneys that are handling the, the condemnation, a resolution has to be passed. Basically, what happens is there, they, they would petition the court under the eminent domain statute. In order to petition the court, with the petition, they would require an appraisal of the property along with a resolution that demonstrates a public purpose. The reason why is in the advent of the United States Supreme Court decision, uh, Kehoe, that dealt with a taking that was for economic development purposes up in Connecticut back, yeah, I don't know, probably the early nineties, mid-nineties, uh, might have even been into the two thousands, that there was a, a, a decision that you couldn't use constitutional taking powers on projects that had direct private involvement because it had public-private purpose and the like. This is to make a determination that there is a public purpose. I can't imagine more of a public purpose than a police department. Uh, there is no private purpose and, or, or other types of partnership associated with this property. We need it to start the eminent domain proceeding.
And if you ever would say that this is a friendly eminent domain, it's, it's been guided that way. Because it's, some suggestions, Russo, I don't want to speak out of turn, but, but...
I mean, at, at least from, from lower levels within the company, they're, they've suggested that it would not be, um, that there would not be a, a fight, but that it was easier to go through eminent do- domain than it was to go through the layers of your Verizon bureaucracy to get an answer on selling the property.
Paying for it.
Correct. It'll be...
And it's important that we've made repeated efforts to reach people at the, who are the property owners.
Advised to take this direction. Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two forty-nine.
Second.
Second, all right, is there any other discussion?
I've got a question for Mr. Rizzo.
Yes, sir, Mr.?
Do they not have a, a registered agent with the Secretary of State that we can converse with them? Verizon, have we checked that? Every corporation is supposed to have a registered agent with the Secretary of State that communicate on such deals as that. Have we done that?
I'm not sure we have sent any official letter to their registered agent. Um, we've had more direct communications with their...
With the local people, which don't have the authority to do it, which is what they've said. But if I was gonna do it, I would at least write them and, uh, say what the circumstances are. That's, if, if you're gonna sue, you're gonna have to sue that registered agent, right? Okay.
I, I don't know if that's been done or not, I, I can't answer.
Well, it doesn't sound like it has.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-two dash forty-nine. Start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yep.
Four?
No, I think we do...
Four to one. All right, moving on, I think we have under Mr. Rudicell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what's before the council is a, an engagement letter from the Trask Dano Law Firm to serve as conflict counsel for the city of Bradenton. This is a, a firm that has a significant amount of local government experience. Um, I've worked with several of their attorneys in, in, you know, various litigation matters and other, um, issues. Um, they represent several municipalities, they do work on behalf of the League of Cities through the F M I T, uh, doing defense work. Um, so, I, I think they'd be a good choice to represent the city. They proposed, um, the rate structure, it was same one that was in our original engagement, so...
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
All right, so what I'm gonna ask is for a motion. Do I go under discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement agreement with Trask Dano.
Dano.
L L P.
For a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Discussion, Mr. Sanders?
I certainly don't like the conflict attorney picking the conflict attorney. The conflict, the reason we have to have a conflict attorney is because, Mr. Rudicell, you and your law firm has a conflict. Is that true?
This would be a firm that would serve generally whenever there is a conflict of interest.
But you have a conflict of interest.
I don't have a conflict of interest in selecting the firm that would represent the city in the event of a conflict.
I would love to always pick the judge that reviews my case in a trial, wouldn't you? So I don't think there's much difference, but that's my opinion. Number two, um, I, I would go along with this for a short term, but I think we need to put it out for, uh, an offer for anybody to do this, uh, and get more, um, input from numerous lawyers and so that we can talk to them prior to us signing a contract. And I asked you if I could talk to him, you said no. So I don't even know, uh, what their opinion is of why they're being selected as a conflict attorney, other than what you've told me.
First of all, I did not tell you no. When you asked, I said yes. You may reach out to them, but recognize that they have not been engaged to represent the city yet. So if you wanted to reach out and have a discussion with them, generally, an introduction of yourself or whatever you wanted to do, I, I told you that yes, you were welcome to do that. And in fact, I reached out to the attorney and said, hey, just so you know, we may have a councilperson reaching out to, to have a discussion with you. That was my response.
I didn't bring the, the email with you, but that's okay.
Well, I have it here on my phone. If you want me to pull it up.
That's, that's up to you. If you want to, to, to prove that point, I guess you, you're welcome to do that, but I don't know why you're angry.
Because you put out innuendos.
No, that's not an innuendo. That's a...
If he's got the proof, then prove it. So let's move on, because that's happening a lot, Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, it's, it's not...
You do put out innuendos. In three and a half years that I've been here, you've put out enough innuendos with no proof because we're on TV, and that's gotta stop. Prove what you prove, and let's move forward. You've never proved anything.
Well, you didn't want me to get the, the, uh, proof to you that you've investigated people.
I said, bring it on. It was in the newspaper. Mr. Callahan printed it. You got the smoking gun, put it on.
Well, I would request that you do show it, or recu- or pull back your words. I mean, you say things, you never back it up with proof.
I've always got the...
And facts, and then we're left here, and you leave this mark. I mean, I just...
I agree. I, I can appreciate the anger.
Okay, well, I'm not done yet. Okay. So at the last meeting, June fifteenth, Mr. Perry said you couldn't find a conflict attorney because of me. And you shook your head, and I showed you the video clips of that, and you took them back and you reviewed them, and you says, well, I didn't agree with that. I didn't say one way or the other. He said that. He's the one that defamed you, not you. So, well, that may be funny to you, but it's not funny to me because that, well, that's exactly what it said. And you want the facts? Play the video. That's what it said. But let's, let's move on. Now, I asked you if you had reached out to any other attorneys in town, and you said it's none of your business. And you said that you'd reached out to the Dai Law Firm, and I contacted them, and they told me nobody had reached out to them, formally or informally. And you told me that was the only law firm in the city of Bradenton that was qualified on municipal law. So why would you contact anyone else? And if you did contact anyone else, who'd you contact? It should be public record.
I'm not even sure where to begin with all the inaccuracies in what you just said.
All right, tell me who you contacted.
Uh, that part was accurate. I did say that I don't need to tell you who I have reached out to and had informal discussions about whether or not they would like to serve as conflict counsel because, uh, I don't need you reaching out to them and making accusations like you do here at this dais.
So you didn't, either didn't do it. It's public record, sir.
If it's in writing, it's public record. Yes.
So anything, if we get up and have a meeting up in, upstairs mayor's office like we did a few weeks ago, there, there's no public rec- because nobody took notes, that's okay?
There is no public record to, to be shared.
Meet secretly. Oh, can we?
The council and the mayor can't meet secretly, but I can talk with our administrator, as well as you can talk with our administrator, you can talk with our lawyer, and that's part of the process. Mr. Roth, you had a question?
Um, I, I've got a, a suggestion possibly. This is kind of heated right now. To be quite honest, um, I'm gonna... I'm, I'm looking at this. I, this was our packet today, which I went through. Um, I, I kinda glanced at this. It's turning into a heated... I didn't think it would be heated, or, or whatever it is that we call on that right now. Might I make a motion that...
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Well, to table, to table. Because the next meeting is, I'm looking at it. It's, it's just a few weeks away. I'd have a little more time to look at it. I'm not for or against this at all. I'm just saying I, I probably, I'm just trying to figure out a way of keeping this meeting going. I, I'm not really, I di- I didn't dive into this one, so...
Well, I'll call the question. I'll move to call the question.
So, Mr. Rudicell?
I was just gonna say there, and I appreciate where Councilman Roth is coming from and trying to move the meeting forward, but there are matters that are waiting right now to be reviewed by conflict counsel, as I, as I understand it, so. There's three to four key matters, actually, that have to be. And I was advised by Mr. Rudicell, uh, even though I wanted to talk with those attorneys about these matters, he said, wait till it goes to council, get it approved, and I agreed with him. Um, if we want to delay this again, we, we are without counsel for this, and on those matters, it may set things back.
Can, can you tell us what matters?
Mayor, is, is there a question by any counselor?
I, I have a question for you.
I move to call the question. I move to call the question. Is there a second?
I thought, I thought, I thought, I thought a table trumps everything. That's what I thought.
There's a motion on the...
If it's second, I second it.
So we need to now take a vote on the motion to table.
Wait a minute, but my motion doesn't...
Table trumps.
If it's a motion, it's second.
It wasn't second.
But hold on.
His motion was seconded.
Vote to table in Ward one to table.
No.
Ward two?
No.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
No.
So the table fails, so we're back at the original motion to approve. So we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three?
Um, gosh, I don't wanna vote for or against, so what, because I, to be honest, what, can I abstain? What are you doing? Yes or no?
Yep.
Anybody got a coin? Okay.
Yes. Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Passes five to zero. All right, thank you. Uh, Doctor?
We have to have conflict counsel. It's, it's an emergency. Yeah, you're laughing out there, but it, it's an emergency. We've got some serious issues.
You'll be in order, please?
I thought I was.
Dr. St. Luc?
Yes, uh, good morning again. Thank you very much. Um, item that you have is finally the operating agreement with Bird, um, Bird Rides. This has been a long process through R F P, reviews, demos. Uh, we've had several departments, including planning, police, and fire review the operating agreement. And Bird is excited to work with us. Um, they'll be preparing media. They can bring news on site when we're ready to launch. Once we have this operating agreement assigned, they will then engage and have their local manager put in place, secure their facility for, for, um, for scooters.
All right, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coachman.
Motion to approve the operating agreement, excuse me, with Bird Rides and the city of Bradenton.
We have a motion by Ms. Coachman, and second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four. Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
And two.
Yeah.
Period five to zero. Thank you. Um, moving forward with our CRA Executive Director, Caterina.
Good morning. Uh, Caterina Gerakios Siren, CRA Executive Director. Um, we've come before you a couple of times to discuss, um, the affordable project, affordable housing project in the Bradenton CRA. Um, in the past, you have supported it, and there's a few, um, items, changes, and that's the reason we didn't bring it before you last month. We worked with a developer in order to, and she's here before you. Um, she will come before you to explain, uh, some of the changes. But just a quick, um, overlook, this is a overview. This is an eighty unit of affordable housing. Um, again, it is in our downtown core in the Bradenton CRA. Um, H T G, the Housing Trust Group, is the developer. They purchased the entire block, and they, you know, on the bottom floor, there's, uh, they wished to have, uh, there will be retail and then apartments on the top. Uh, in the past, you have voted to approve for the city, on the city side, four hundred and sixty thousand of a low-interest, uh, uh, rate loan for seventeen years, as well as a waiver of the impact fees. And from the CRA side, we had previously agreed to pay approximately half a million dollars, um, as an incentive to bring, uh, much-needed affordable housing. Uh, we have spoken with the developer. They have sharpened their pencils. They went out to get some pricing, and the numbers did not work, um, as presented to you previously. So the new request is it doesn't affect the city's commitment. It would be exactly the same, the four hundred and sixty thousand, uh, low-interest, uh, loan, um, as well as the waiver of the impact fees. From the CRA's, uh, standpoint, they're asking for approximately a one million dollar commitment. Um, and it would start upon commencement of the product, of the project, which is pouring of, uh, concrete, and then the remainder, uh, amount to be given at ninety percent completion of the pro- of the product. Um, Dilia Tabora, the Vice President of Development from H T G is here to give a presentation, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Just one question real quick.
Yes, sir.
What was the, uh, we approved CRA how much before? Five hundred or?
It was approximately half a million dollar, and the calculation is eight hundred thousand minus the impact fees that the city is going to pay, uh, to give, um, to waive. So we don't know exactly how much that number is, but we've estimated it to be anywhere between two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. So when I say approximately, it will be truly approximately, but that's the best estimate I can give you right now. I'm sorry?
What's the new number?
It used to be half a million. Now the request is for one million. So half, uh, half a million more.
It does not include the impact fees. Before you was reducing it.
It's in addition to the impact fees, in addition to the four hundred and sixty K.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, this is, um, sorry?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this money is coming, this, the only city contribution is the impact fees and the four sixty loan, right?
Right, and it's not...
And the rest, the rest is coming out of the CRA?
Right.
Is that correct?
I don't think we have to prove anything.
That's what I'm saying. What is...
Um, so, and, and what, why are we?
Just...
Oh, no, why is it in a council meeting if it's a CRA?
This is a three-way agreement because the city is agreeing to the loan as well as the waiver of the impact fees, and the CRA is approving the incentives, so we would need both, uh, agencies to approve that.
Thank you. Um, so, just, just so I'm getting it, because I keep looking at the different numbers. I'm still trying to get my... The four sixty loan, the one fifty, uh... I'm looking at eight hundred thousand. I know we already committed to a million.
The eight hundred thousand was the eight hundred thousand minus the impact fees, so that's where that half a million commitment was.
Okay.
So it's the difference from eight hundred thousand minus whatever the end result of the...
Same example, it might be a million three.
And now it's one, one-three. So that's the big increase that you're going to see.
But that's coming out of the CRA. No- nothing changed in the city.
Okay, all right, I got it.
The only thing is, wasn't there something about, uh, wanting some kind of variance from form-based code as well?
No, actually, because they are, in my, and maybe Dilia can answer better, but my understanding is they are actually going with form-based codes which has added to their costs because of the retail, so they are following...
On the first floor.
Correct. Oh, there you are.
Sent you an updated presentation last night. I don't, I haven't emailed it.
Yeah, I don't know. I sent it to, is that to Bill? Is that the updated one, or no?
Let me see. I'll put it down. No, this is not. Um, just 'cause it'll be easier for them to see, like, the breakdown in what I did yesterday. I can email it.
Tamara, if she, Ms. Melton, if she emails it to you right now, would we be able to pull it up?
I'll find a thumb drive to put it on that, 'cause that's not on the network. So I have a thumb drive if you wanna email it.
Yeah, while they're doing that, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, so some of us can use the restroom. So we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Be executed. So that's, you know, two years that things could fluctuate. And usually the industry standard, and you know, we do this also based on our portfolio of properties that we have, that we have in construction, that we have built recently, which again, that's over forty properties in Florida that we are able to look at historical data for. We look at all of this and we apply, you know, the industry standard increase, you know, for the operating expenses, what the potential increase for the construction cost is. So we always build in something year to year, right? That was, that's just not enough to cover what happened in these last two years. And that's kind of where we're at. And what that looks like in terms of numbers is what you have up on the screen here, which I hope can help answer some of those kind of stacking questions that I was hearing. But what you have on the left side here is basically what we had as our assumptions for that 2020 application. So when we initially submitted the project and the conditions at that time, you know, this was the estimated total development cost that we had, which again already had a built-in buffer that was based on the past years and just historical data overall. We were expecting, you know, about twenty-two, five for total development cost. We had the $460,000 loan from the city there, which was mainly there again to help us get funded. That was one of the big items for preference, so. But we had not reached out to the CRA yet for any assistance. Then in May, we finally received the bids back from the contractors. And we went out to bid three different contractors. They all came around within half a million of each other. So that, that price was, you know, nine million dollars above what we were expecting, all three of them. So thankfully, here in May, we already knew that the CHIRP program was coming out. So we were able to build that in, and that's why you see as a piece of that pie. We have that additional. So what Florida Housing ended up, you know, settling at is roughly about, you know, four and a half million of additional help through that CHIRP program. As you can see, however, with, with that scenario, it was still completely unfeasible. We have a remaining gap even with CHIRP and with the 800,000 assistance from the CRA. The gap was still over $5 million, which is just something that we would not be able to cover, even, you know, with all of our equity that we have in the deal. So we went back in May and actually reached out to a couple of new contractors to get these rebid. And we are awaiting those bids right now, this week, actually, at the end of this week. We're here and our target is to try to get to something that's still a very significant increase. As you can see, from 2020 to here, it's about $6 million more in total development cost. But we are just trying to get to, you know, a level where the gap there can be something that we can cover. So, you know, that one to one and a half million dollars is something that can be absorbed into the deal. This really, I mean, to put it simply, the pizza pie just kind of got bigger and we just looking for more ingredients to kind of fill those slices appropriately. And the 500,000 in additional assistance would really, really, really go a long way here. We also, let me see. No, pretty much that, I mean, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer. We have provided backup to Katerina as well, and we're happy to provide any backup that you guys may need. But this is really an unprecedented increase that we have never, ever seen, to be honest. I, if you told me it, I would not believe the numbers that we're hearing. But as you can see from even the state's response, it's something that, that really is seen as an emergency. It's something that is not just us as developers, but several developers in the state of Florida. I would say probably eighty-five percent of the developers that build affordable housing. And again, just a reminder that now this, these problems are like a construction problem. They're really hard to offset for, for affordable housing projects because, you know, we, we can't pass the buck along. So it's really, we are just very grateful for the help that you have provided us so far. And if, if it's a possibility for your consideration for the increased amount, we would be ecstatic. And just to clarify the request here, the reason why this is on the agenda for the city is because we before came here for the 800,000 dollar LURA that only included the CRA. So now we've worked with the attorney to kind of combine those into one LURA, less documents. The terms are in there. So this could be a two-part request with, you know, one being approving the documents for the city loan to be incorporated into the LURA as one document. And the second request, which would be to increase the amount of the CRA. But I, I don't know if that would be an item for the CRA meeting. And yeah, open for questions if you guys have any.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I love the look of the project. And my big question is, how long, I have two questions. How long do you think you'll own the, the project?
So at least fifteen years is when we refinance. But so far, we have only sold off, I think, one of our very, one or two of our very old, like older properties. And other than that, we keep them in our, and these are affordable for fifty years.
Fifty?
Yeah, five zero with the state, correct.
And, and I'm hearing construction costs, I mean, construction costs are going down. And, and now I'm maybe in a totally different market. Why are yours still going up?
So we'll see what the bids come in now, but we have been in touch with contractors that are bidding things out right now or in the last month. And one of the, one of the items is that, yes, we don't have the luxury of, of time. And even, for example, I would, I would have loved to come here to the next month's meeting with those bids back so that I would have actuals. But I do need to go back and finish my underwriting with all the lenders because unfortunately, that CHIRP money, that Florida Housing has given, they want people to act on it fast, so they're requiring everyone to finish their underwriting by September. And so we're kind of up against the timeline. And this is why with, with the big, with kind of a big unknown, we have to just move forward with what we have as information. And we do, we do believe that seeing everyone's, and by everyone, I mean what Florida, because Florida Housing posted online what they received from the developers and, you know, the average increase that they've been seeing. As they established, it was approximately like thirty percent across the, what they received of construction increase. We are hoping to get to this number here. The final target is about eighteen percent increase from what we originally had. So we're hoping to get to a number that is, that is doable. And it is also based on what we've been seeing locally closing. We've been in touch with Blue Sky Communities, you know. This, this, this emergency has actually triggered a lot of coworking between the developers because it's finally a problem that we all share and that we're all seeing.
Do you have one other? Was that both of them?
No.
Mr. Roth?
I, I mean, I appreciate where you're at. These are indeed strange times. I know that half the economists out there are actually hoping for recession to bring inflation in check. So that's, that's pretty weird. I think it's a great project. I'm excited to be part of it. I have no problem with the request in lieu of the, the economic times that we're in, so. A motion will be made to move to approve the land use restriction agreement with HTG Revue Six LTD and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and all such documents necessary to carry out its terms.
Second, Mr. Sanders? I have just one question. Now, you were purchasing the property, correct? And was all that done?
We have now closed on seven of the nine parcels. The next one is actually closing July 26th, so next week. And the one after that, September 7th.
So that won't be an impediment once you get ready to?
No, though, we actually have to close on the land in order to meet the Florida Housing guidelines again. Yeah. And, and by the way, I forgot kind of the gist of, of the answer to your question, which was also that we need to have a DC contract executed by August 1st so that that report can be completed by September. So there, there might be some benefit in waiting to see like if those costs do go down. But we just don't have that luxury of time in this specific development because it's already been out for so long. It was actually, you know, we were supposed to close and start construction in June, July. And, and because this new money came out, we decided, you know, it's worth it to wait to take advantage of the money that the state is giving us so that this can actually be built without having to take away too many elements and strip it down.
If it does go down?
Yeah.
Is that 100,000 going to be fluctuating or is that a set?
I, I am happy to share the, the bids with Katerina or with, with the city manager or the city attorney when they come. And if, if, I would be so happy if that's the case. I would be more than happy to come back here and have you guys tell me what you want me to do.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Though the cost may be going down, it's not going to be pre-2020. So, you know, we can only hope that it's substantial enough that, you know.
Well, I, I, I'm a little at how much of an increase they're asking for. I think it's a lot personally. That's all I'm saying.
Ms. Barnaby? Any question?
I don't have a question. I, I know that we absolutely need more affordable housing in our community. And, and again, it seems like the city is pushing ahead on some of these. And we don't see other community, other parts of the community stepping up yet, so.
Agreed. All right, we've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward Four to approve.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yep.
Three?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, it says Riverwalk Expansion Discussion.
I asked to put that on. I just have a couple of, just, so I just wanted to remind everyone that when we approved the grand opening agreement, that, that it was going to be, city council was going to have input on the agenda. So I haven't seen that yet. I've heard that there was going to be a budget, sir, Rob?
I'm sorry?
I, I, I heard that there might be a budget increase request for about 500K from a, is that, is that true? I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to get it out there if that's happening.
Mayor, I know that Mr. McClellan has been working closely on this project. And obviously, he's on vacation this week. I, I don't know what the final determination is for that, to be perfectly honest with you.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to get it out there that I've heard that. That usually means it's coming and I'm not opposed to it. I just.
If you'd like, I can try to reach him by phone and try to get with you, maybe today or tomorrow.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
And we'll get an update and we'll get an update on everything, like you said.
Okay, okay, good. And, and then this, there's another item on this that'll come up in a CRA meeting.
All right, perfect. All right, Mr. Perry, any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
All right, council reports, we'll start in Ward Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll tell you what, they keep saying that COVID isn't something to be concerned about anymore, but I think that we've seen that it's, for lack of a bad pun, it's a gift that keeps on giving. So I would just advise everybody out there to be as careful as they can. I continue to test negative, but I was exposed to someone that I've been told tested positive. So I'm following the CDC protocol. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yeah. Okay, so, well, I wanted to bring up, so Mr. Smith spoke earlier and spoke of hostile, hostility in this building. When I came in this building in January 2006, I found it to be hostile. And it's been hostile pretty much the whole time I've been here. Not, not, and that's just, and it reminds me of an old saying. I think it was Harry Truman said, if you can't stand the heat, stay out of the kitchen. So I just figured it's part of the job and I take it. And I'll always remember my first year, I was upstairs. There was a discussion, I think I was, I remember it specifically because it was like the mayor, I think Carl, you were there, and Alan Prather was there. And we were standing around the Renee area there. And I said something about how I'm going to have to grow some tougher skin. And Alan Prather, I knew him from, he was a client before in my previous life. And he said, I said, I'm going to have to grow some tougher skin. He said, you're going to have to grow some alligator skin. And, and that's a damn fact. That's just the way it is. So, hey, it is what it is. It's hostile, always has been. One of the reasons I'm leaving, I want to leave a peaceful life and I'm giving up the game. So beyond that, I think that's it, right? Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
I went upstairs on the break and copied the email, Mr. Riddoso. And Tuesday, July 19th at 9:27, I said, is there any problem with me contacting them? Thanks, Bill. Referring to the new conflict. You said, Bill, no. You're welcome to reach out and introduce yourself. Just recognize that we have not engaged yet. Would that be a true statement? You'd like to look at this?
Yes, you asked if there was an issue contacting them and I said, no.
Well, you don't think I'm just going to say hi, do you?
What?
Okay, I'd like to have this reintroduced to the record because you just said that you said it was okay. You know what I'm talking about when I talk to an attorney, what I'm going to ask them, don't you? Yes, let's, let's move on. This, this, there's the proof, Mr. Mayor. I always have something if I've allowed to, to submit it, so.
Sure, let me.
There's no different interpretation of that. You can give it, spin it, whatever you want.
It says, Bill, no, you are welcome to reach out to them. So he was saying, there is no conflict. You can reach out to them. I mean, anybody can read that.
He said to introduce yourself. You're not reading the whole statement.
Right, but just recognize that they have not engaged.
Say, hi, I'm Bill, goodbye.
Bill, no, you are welcome to reach out and introduce yourself. Just recognize they're not engaged yet. So that's saying, yes, go ahead, because you asked. And he said, but, I mean, Mr. Roth, how do you read that? So it just, facts are the facts.
I take the fifth.
Right, because you know it's not.
And the way I would take it is if you start engaging them for legal work, it's on your dollar.
He is saying, no, you're welcome to reach out and introduce yourself. Just rec, you know, introduce yourself. He didn't mean to just say, oh, hey, I'm Bill. He's just saying, you know, you're going to have a conversation, you get to know each other, that kind of thing. He's not saying specifically you're just going to say hi.
And he doesn't say no.
And he's cautioning you.
We definitely know you're going to say more than hi.
And if, and he's telling you, we haven't engaged him. So if you start asking for legal opinion, it's on your dollar, not the city's.
I'm glad everybody has this psychic ability to know.
I know, I know. All right, we're going to move on. So Mr. Sanders, it's your report.
I'm not done.
That's what I said, it's your report.
Okay.
So, but, you know, that's funny.
But before, I was accused of talking to Ms. Boss. And all of a sudden, it's like, oh, she doesn't like, like what I'm saying. So it's like, you can't have it both ways. You just can't have it both ways. And Mr. Riddoso, we have a contract with you.
We don't have a contract with you.
We have a letter of engagement from 2019 that was supposed to be annually reviewed. Are we going to annually review it? Because Mr. Perry put in $28,000, as I understand, and I saw it still in that budget, unless you just haven't pulled it out, to hire in-house counsel. Is there your intention to hire in-house counsel? Or when are we going to review your letter of engagement?
If I could just be correct, I think somebody has to correct with some degree of precision. The 28,000, I believe, I don't want to speculate, but I believe that's being referred to, was to hire a search firm, basically, to.
Oh, yeah.
Go out to the market, not, not to hire a new lawyer. And there's the world of difference between those two.
Okay, well, I assume when you search, you're looking for one. But anyway, that, so should we not review the contract as we proposed in 2019? For, we haven't done it since 2019. Would you not recommend that, Mr. Riddoso?
I'm not sure what you're asking. I, I don't think there's anything in the engagement letter that says it would be reviewed annually. But let me add, we serve at the pleasure of the council and we can be terminated at any time, so.
That's your engagement letter?
Correct.
Three votes, you're going.
That's right.
Brian, I know, I'm, Mr. Bemis Smith came in here and was allowed to use this chamber as a political speech, which I didn't think we allowed. But since we've allowed it, I suppose we've opened the door that I should respond.
He spoke for his public comment for three minutes. And I don't believe Mr. Smith is running for election.
No, Mr. Smith was your buddy, you and him, and you and him.
My buddy.
Yeah, he is, because you ran against me four years ago, supported him. Yeah, you did. You campaigned for him.
I didn't run against you.
You campaigned for him.
Well, you campaigned for Mr. Byrd. So, you know, that's all the same, you know, you can campaign who you want privately, but go on.
Okay, all right. Well, you, you went, once he lost by sixty-three percent in the council chambers upstairs on my inauguration day, you made a threat to me in front of my family.
That's very untrue.
That we take three votes to get anything done and I'm not the hot shot that you think I am.
That never happened, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I understand you. I have witnesses. I have witnesses.
Well, that never occurred.
So what Mr. Smith is referring to, you know, if you can't win an election, you sue. So he sued me. The suit is still pending. So without the advice of my counsel, I'm not going to state things that he stated. He says, go look it up. And I think that may have hurt his case, which he didn't have one to begin with. So it's been going on four years. If he had a case, it would have been brought to trial. But everybody almost in this room is a witness. Mr. Callahan's a witness. Mr. Roth's a witness. Chief of Police is a witness. Ex-mayor is a witness. Half a dozen or more police officers are witnesses. Bemis is a witness, I'm a witness. And not one witness statement said there was anything wrong. I'm not going to give you the, the pleasure of, of providing that to you because I may be violating what my attorney would advise me. But what Mr. Smith said was this, and you can look it up. He said, there is a good old boy system. That's on tape, it's all in video, and it's in, transcribed in writing. And he names some names. I'm not going to do that because it would embarrass some people here today. I'm not going to do that. But at, at some conclusion, this will come out. And Mr. Mayor, you said there is a good old boy system, that you're proud of it. Mr. Perry, you said the good old boy system a month later was gone. I let the public decide that. So I'm pretty disappointed that you've allowed this chamber to become political. And you've invited my opponent to many events and taken pictures and posted and used our Facebook page as a promotion with city funds. That's illegal. Matter of fact, there was a new law that just passed, this take effect July 1, that you cannot do that. So I, I will challenge that at the right time. It's, you, you know, taxpayers pay for everything in this building. And you can't use social media or email or so forth for political purposes. It's just a fact. And if you don't want to agree with me, then we'll get a third opinion, which would be the Florida. And so you're smiling, I know, I understand. But you're the one I just referred to, Mr. Perry, as changing the numbers. And I have proof here. So one other thing I want to bring up, Mr. Mayor, at our last meeting, at our last meeting, it was brought to our attention that the police union had forty-six allegations against the police department. You said that you was going to find out from FDLE and hope to have information within a week if they were going to investigate. Did you do that?
Yes, I did talk with FDLE and, you know, other investigations were done, which I'll go over in my report.
Okay, did, did, did you, did they tell you there was not going to be an investigation?
I will go over in my report what the FDLE and HR of the city of Bradenton has.
Did you, did you give, did you give all the report that the Policeman Evolent Union to FDLE?
I sent to FDLE to do an investigation.
Sent what?
The letter that came in, so, but.
No, there, there was no.
This isn't a debate between you and I. Finish your report and then I will respond.
Well, I've got the FDL letter and you did not submit the whole report. So you can't get a, you can't get a determination if you don't, you can't give them part of the report and then ask for determination. So you, you can ask, answer that in your, but I, I'm, I'm pretty upset that, that you didn't give them all the information. So where's your facts that you gave them all? Because this letter from them says only one. So there was fifty-some odd people that didn't get hurt. That's all I have.
Mrs. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a list of things I wanted to say, but often I kind of just get so flustered that I can't get through them. But I'm going to just quickly go through some of the things that I wanted to mention in my comments. In terms of what we are up here to do, city business, Ward Five is, is, as I always say, alive. But we're looking forward to really bringing something to an area that has missed a bit and needs a bit. And I don't think the rest of the city of Bradenton would get upset about us giving that attention. I think the rest of Bradenton would be happy to see that the entire city is being brought up to a, a good standing or quality of life. One of the concerns, or one of the concerns that I often hear from citizens, it has to do with not necessarily recycle or solid waste or anything like that, but housing. And, 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 and more so taking care of houses that have been boarded up and, and just left for decades. You know, there, there are people in my community, that, our community, that are really, really excited about what they hear and, and where we as a council, a city governing body, is trying to move towards, you know, changing things. Code, code enforcement is definitely doing their job. But of course, I do have a lot of people that are not seeing the fairness because they feel like their violations, even, you know, they're receiving these violation letters saying, you've got to do this, but yet they look right across the street and they see a, you know, abandoned home and what have you, raccoons taking over and homeless people taking over. One good thing, I don't see anyone in here that has specifically come up before us complaining about the Copeland home, but it has now been demolished and cleared away. So that's a good thing. I, I hope though, Mayor, when we do this again, you know, in other situations, remember I say, I want us to decryder it before we, before we take their habitat and then they just spread along and find new homes. I'm just excited about what is in front of us, you know. We've got some exciting things going. The presentation today about that, that, you know, software or what have you that can do, you know, do the kinds of things and give us the kind of answers and the data that we need to make good policy decisions. So I think the public is, is, at least those that I hear from. So, I think the public is, is, at least those that I hear from, they're excited that we are doing some good things as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Coker.
Yeah. First off, I don't know if everybody's seen, but the new season is out for the Manatee Players. Go get your tickets. It's always, it's always exciting, and I like supporting the local talent here, rather than Hollywood, so get your tickets, enjoy that. Went and saw the Riverwalk Extension the other day, walked it, got a nice little tour. Very excited about that getting opened, and I, but I did wanna say, and I was hoping Jim was gonna be here, but, great swings, way better than the, the initial Riverwalk, but they're looking at the mangroves. Can we tra, can we trim the mangroves so you can see the river? I don't, I don't know. I'd like to kinda bring that up, and I'm a little concerned about so many rocks. Is that gonna have more water, you know? But anyhow, it looks, it's looking good, I'm excited about it. And, you know, I, I tell you, that just continually, constantly bashing our law enforcement is just really concerning to me. And I, I just, I just want the law enforcement to know how much we appreciate. I mean, when they strap on that vest every day, they are going out there, and public safety is so paramount for all of us. And, and I just wanna say that I don't doubt that there aren't, there, there aren't rooms for improvement, but in general, I feel like we need to support them, and to use a document that's somebody's, a few people's opinions, and to hold it out there, that it needs, I mean, the way it's being represented is, in my opinion, inappropriate. And I just wanna thank all of our law enforcement, because I, I know that it's a tough job. And I don't, and I'm not surprised that there's low morale, my goodness, in this country right now, with the rhetoric that we get from the national spotlight. I mean, of course, the morale's gonna be low. So I think, for us, as council people, we shouldn't be getting into that. We should be cheering them and supporting them. So, I just wanna say that, and stay cool, it's hot out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. If I could just kinda segue and tag on with you, Jane. I mean, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Coker. I may get to see BPD more up close and personal than anyone in here. I think in the last week, I have been involved, you know, in, in them doing the, the jobs that they do. So I can say, yes, almost every career occupation you will have, there's always gonna be a bad apple. You know, it's just sad that that does occur, but as, you know, human, I guess, I don't know, I'm not excusing it. But the Bradenton Police Department deserves credit, because in Bradenton, at least in my area, there's some serious, dangerous situations. We're so blessed that we've not had problems. I, I hear people talk about what happened two years ago, three years ago, what have you, but to this day, all of my interactions with BPD have been good. And I don't know if you noticed, I'm black. Just had to say that.
Thank you, Mrs. Coachman, Mrs. Coker. So that's the council reports. A couple of things that I'd like to bring up. There was a statement made at our June 15 meeting about Venice recycling. So whenever a statement's made, I wanna bring it up. I wanna get some information, and see what, if, if they're doing it better than us, how we can do it better. You know, and obviously, we know the change that happened, you know, on June 3, with the, the recycling that's going on. Well, I did, did reach out to Venice, got some information, and Dr. St. Louis helped me with his contacts down there. Did find out that some of the things that were said were inaccurate, from the standpoint of Venice still picks up their own recycling. They don't farm it out. Mr. Sanders, I'm talking, you had your chance. Let me finish my chance. There, well, I've got the documentation right here from Venice.
I have it too.
And it has, they have a contract, but.
That's right.
Please, please, let me finish. You know, you can't take part of a sentence and change it, but, but the Venice has, since 2019, has been charging a surcharge to their customers. And it, it's $10.77 in 19, 1034, 1039, and, and this past year was 929. So, you know, it's, there was charges. We have never added charges onto ours. Now, they do get some, some clawbacks on things when the recycling is high, and different things that way, but they still charge their customers. So that was important to see. Our recycling program that we've seen, if you read our newsletter, our recycling program changed by five to zero vote, when it changed in earlier part of the year. We are looking at it now. I just wanna say thank you to our people that are still recycling and making it important. Because when you look at what we had recycled, clean recycling, in the percentage-wise, and we saw from 50 to 70% different times, and what was actually going to the landfill and to the recycling. Our partners to the south county staff had a few comments on that at a meeting a while back with one of their commissioners, that I was disappointed in, because they said we were gonna fill up the landfill quicker by not having a recycling program. And obviously, this council, by majority, did not eliminate a recycling program. We tried to grow it. And when you look in the first month, we're pretty darn close to the tonnage that was being recycled and what was going. So, that's month one. So, and, and I said in the letter, not lip service, it's about working it and making it better. So now, hopefully, the first month, the people realize, I gotta keep doing it. We hope they don't pull back. And we're adding, actually, hopefully, other sites. Seven of the 10 sites are not filling up. Three of the sites are overflowing. So, that's in our public works to try to figure it out. Mr. Perry and I, and Jim McClellan drove around to the sites last week, looked at some of it, and when you looked at what people were recycling, it is almost all clean. So that is showing that there is people out there. Now, with that said, Mr. Perry and I had a meeting with our county counterparts over there, and I know Palmetto's interested. Is there better ways we can do things? Is there a possibility of, you know, improving even what we're, what we're on now, as a countywide program? Maybe. That's gonna have to come back to us. But this is not one and done, and be over with. This is a program that is gonna grow, and as we heard Dr. Tomasco today, you heard some of the things he said about how we're gonna have to do things with our environmental process. This plays into it. The recycling is a huge benefit for our community. So how do we grow that, and how do we figure it out? Now, take the recycling out. I believe, in the first month of doing it differently, we are now gonna have regular garbage pickup and yard waste in a better way. And if you drive around our communities, and especially those communities that didn't look as good, mostly yard waste, they're looking better. And I'm hearing that from our citizens. It's an evolution, it's growing. We are going to make this better. Did we have, 'cause, believe me, if you got phone calls, I got twice as many, and I return the phone calls, because that's important. And this isn't about one ward, it's about all of us, and how we make it better, and how we then grow recycling to do that. So, those processes are going through. I wanna thank our staff, you know? We're changing to where we have the little slide on the, the doors of the cans, I mean, the dumpsters, all those. Yeah, well, they're trying to figure it out. But again, that's an evolution, we're making it better. We're not just saying, put it and don't, you know? And, and again, I, you, right away, we got one location that was a little bit interesting, but I haven't got one call about the locations now being bad. It's only been, hey, there's too much stuff there. So how do we figure out to not have the stuff on the outside? Which is a good thing, 'cause we're getting the clean recycling. All right, so that's on the recycling. On the policy that we have for our public citizen comment, on our Florida League of Cities, I don't know if, how many of you were on it, or how many of you heard it, but there was a question asked about the policies and different things of how, you know, we do, go through it. I was not on the call, but I understand, and got from several people that were on it, information that what we're doing is right. Our public policy that this board has set is the way you do it. You do not want to engage one-on-one at that point. Now, if that policy changes, I'll manage that policy. But, the Florida League of City Attorney said what we were doing was, was good. And, the follow-up was that they believed in it. So, the Florida League of Cities Attorney said that was a good policy, and you know, you, you don't really want to engage as much. But we have never refused to help a citizen that came in here. Whether it was in planning, Robin walked out with him. Whether it was in police, whether it was in public works, we have always tried to answer those three minutes of questions. And there's not a person up here, since I've been here, that gets criticized negatively more than I do for something that is not true. And until the evidence comes out that they're supposedly got, you know, innuendos can be put out all day long, but you have to prove them. So, that is the, the policy in that. Now, I also wanna make a comment in general to this whole council, in that, talking about political things, I have never asked anybody to come to a political situation, or a city situation, and get pictures of. Is there public events that everybody can go to? Anybody can go to a public event. So, and we all have our, Mr. Sanders?
I overheard you.
Mr. Sanders?
I heard the comment.
Mr. Sanders, I'm speaking. It doesn't, that doesn't, you, you hear a lot of things that don't come out. So, I did not say, come get in a picture for the city of Bradenton. I called you first, and I said, everybody come in and get in the picture. So, we're gonna move on from that. Now, that, because it's not true, and you, you propagandize everything. Now, city resources are very important, to keep the city resources for city business.
That's right.
Not propaganda, and not political campaign material. So, you know, I'm just saying that in general to the council. Do not print your opponent's report on a computer in the city in paperwork. So that's something that, you know, is city resources, and, you know, it's the ethics part of it, and please keep that, you know, correct now, going forward. And then, obviously, I do wanna say to everybody, you know, I mean, it's, it's out there, there's been some things that happened in our community, with some traffic accidents and people, it wasn't children, but it reminded me of the children during the summer. You really gotta look over your shoulder, and make sure the children are, they're not always watching them, you know? And sometimes, you know, I know that, that we get out there, but you've gotta really make sure that we're watching for the children. And then this heat wave, if you're out there working, don't get over-exhausted. But, but no, I will always, and I will always stand up for right, and, and do that. And in the political times, things happen, but, you know, we're gonna keep going forward, but just please, do the right things for the right reason, especially when nobody's looking. And that's all I have. We'll move on to the department head reports. Mr. Perry?
I think further.
Anyone else have anything?
I thought you was gonna address the FDLE.
I am, I am. That's gonna be passed out. So now, there was brought up about the FDLE, the report that, that we sent. I sent everything that I had to them, with the, the letter that came out, and FDLE, Madam Clerk, could you pass out? I also, in that same report, there was some HR issues that we went to. And, and there is one other thing, Mr. Perry, I wanna ask you to address before we close to, so Mrs. Melton has that. I just finally got the final part from the HR, I believe it was Nilsa yesterday, maybe, or day before. So you can pass those out, and you can read those reports, as we know, the findings. I mean, I can't force an organization to do anything. All I can do is give them the information, and go from there, and so we can forward on that. Mr. Perry, I would like you to address, since we're at this point, maybe Mr. Riddell, maybe it's not the right venue, and we need to get our labor lawyer, but we would like to address some issues that, that things have flown out there about rumors. We are, where are we at with our union negotiations now? Just general, because we just wanna, we're not gonna talk about it, but what we're, what the consequences and policies are.
Specifically with, with PBA, basically, we have, we have scheduled, that's required by law, hearings in, I wanna say September 19th, where a special hearing officer has been appointed to hear what's called an impasse, basically. We've continued to negotiate. And with PBA, there's two particular groups. There's the Lieutenants' Union, and then there's Rank and File, which goes up through officers and sergeants. And I think we're fairly close with, with the lieutenants' situation, and we, that is not part of the impasse, from what I understand. As it relates to Rank and File, we will have those hearings, and there's a procedure to take place. I would just basically kinda advise people to be very careful with their meetings, with people. We are in a particular period where PPCs, prohibited practices, complaints, sworn depositions, subpoenas, eustace ticum, documents, testimony, personal appearance, could all play a role and put people in very, very compromised positions. In fact, in positions that could be inconsistent with the city's interest, and put, put the city in a position of jeopardy.
We are at impasse right now, so we can't be going any forward on others, but, all right? And then, I think that's all we had there, so, all right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.